I believe we are at 5:00 PM. Do we have a quorum of planning commissioners?
You do have a quorum.
Outstanding. Counsel, do we have a full body?
We have a quorum. Yeah, so counsel is in order with a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe we are prepared for a discussion about Charlottesville plans together. Who's kicking us off?
Sure, we'll turn the time over to RHI and their team to provide the presentation. And then it'll move into discussion followed by public feedback. Did want to remind the the public early that this was advertised for comments at two minutes per person. So do keep that in mind as you're preparing your statements for later in the evening. But if you're okay, Chair, it looks like we can turn the time over to RHI.
I believe so. Thank you.
Thanks, Missy and Lyle. Good evening, everyone. Joe, if you'd like to bring up the slides, that would be great. Thanks. As many of you know, my name is Jenny Koch. I'm an urban planner with RHI. And I'm the project manager for the consultant team for Seville Plans Together. We've been partnering throughout this process with the city's Department of Neighborhood Development Services, as well as with other staff to refine the materials we'll describe tonight. And we'll continue to work with with everyone as we move forward to refine the plan. Before I move on, I want to note you'll also hear from some other folks tonight. Ron Sessoms from RHI is also on the consultant team. He's here tonight. He's an urban designer and urban planner. Lee and Christie from Code Studio, I believe, will also be here. You'll hear a bit from them in the presentation. They are zoning experts on the team. And lastly, I believe we may have a representative from HRNA attending tonight in many ways to hear the discussion and also potentially as a reference as needed as we go along. To go to the next slide. Before we jump to the agenda for tonight, I wanted to note just a few things. Sort of reminders for all of us, those who are listening, those who are here, the Planning Commission, Council as well. First, as a general reminder for everyone, the Seville Plans Together process is really focused on updating the overall future vision for the city of Charlottesville with a focus on equity and affordability. It's been a part of this process throughout, something we want to stay centered on. There are three parts to the Seville Plans Together process. They all work together and need to speak to each other and work with each other to be successful in the end. The Affordable Housing Plan was reviewed earlier this year and endorsed by Council on March 1st. We're currently in the phase now of refining updates to the comprehensive plan, including the future land use map. And these land use strategies are a really important part of building affordability in Charlottesville, but it's not the only piece that needs to speak with the Affordable Housing Plan. The next step, of course, is the zoning rewrite, which we are not yet in the phase of completing, but you'll hear a bit about zoning tonight because we want to make it clear how the land use proposals might translate into zoning, some of our ideas about that. Last time we met with you on, well, we met with you last on September 14th about the chapters, but we met with you last about the future land use map, I think, on August 31st. And we received a lot of comments, both from the community and from the Planning Commission. And I think what we noted here on the slide is perhaps the most universal comment theme that we heard, which was people wanting more clarity about how the land use map is tied to affordability. So we'll speak more about that tonight. Next slide, please, Joe. This is our agenda. I want to note there's a small box we added on there. We posted the slides last week and we made one update earlier today. Very minor, relatively minor update to the maps to make sure all of the open space and park spaces were shown. A couple of them had incidentally been hidden. So I want to make it clear that was not intentional. This is how we'll proceed tonight. As has been mentioned, we will have a community comment period with two minutes, two minutes per comment. Next slide, please. So as a reminder, as we work toward finalizing the comprehensive plan, which, as you all know, has been a process ongoing since 2017 and picked up in 2020. We're currently scheduled for a joint hearing with Planning Commission and Council on October 12th. And then Council is scheduled for hearing on November 15th with the second reading on December 6th. After that, we'll theoretically move into the zoning ordinance after the adoption of the comprehensive plan. So these are all dates that are planned for now. So I want to make sure it's clear what our current plan is moving forward. Next slide, please. So this says future land use map. Before we move on to the map, I want to speak briefly about the chapters as noted on the agenda. We met with Planning Commission, as I noted, on September 14th last week to discuss the high level revisions to the topic-specific chapters, as well as the draft implementation chapter. We're working to incorporate the feedback we've received from Planning Commission and staff and others. And I just wanted to note before we go into the land use map, if there are other comments the Planning Commission would like to share tonight or others in public comment, we certainly welcome that feedback, Council as well. And all those slides from last meeting are included in appendix to this presentation. So if you want to reference that, just a note for you all. Moving on to the future land use map, please. I will now hand it off to Ron for a bit.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Before we get into the details of the land use categories, I did want to provide an overview where we are of the overall map. So you can see here's the current version of the map. It has not changed very much since the last iteration that was presented on August 31st, at the last commission meeting that we had regarding the future land use map. You can see in the left with the key, we still have our nine key land use categories that range from downtown core down to residential, general residential. You will see one change on this overall map. That would be the inclusion of sensitive community areas. As we discussed on the August 31st call, that we have identified at least from a high level for a future land use map, areas that are sensitive to displacement pressures. And we'll talk a little bit more about these sensitive community areas in the presentation later in the presentation. But I did want to highlight that change that we brought that overlay, if you will, onto the primary map so that we can show that visually and carry forward that idea as part of the overall comprehensive land use map. Next slide. Again, we are carrying over the nine core land use categories that we've been showing from the last meeting, just to give everyone a point of orientation of how the land uses are distributed. We have three core areas, residential, mixed-use nodes, and mixed-use corridors, which are three primary elements of the future land use map. Residential, of course, are areas that cater to where residents live. And they range in a variety of intensity from general residential to higher intensity residential. From that, we do have mixed-use nodes, which are activity centers that can support both commercial and residential activities. And we have these, again, ranked from level of intensity, from least intensive down to more intensive. And these nodes are distributed throughout the city. And then we have the corridors, the areas that tie these mixed-use nodes together, areas that are thoroughfares within the city that can provide active mixed-use environments that are multimodal oriented because their location along key corridors that have either transit, planned transit, or other pedestrian bicycle facilities along them to help facilitate multimodal development. Next slide, please. I did want to touch on just a few minor map changes that we made since the August 31st meeting. We're now showing the downtown mall as a parking open space. This is something that we were showing in the May version, but it kind of got lost through the iterations of the map. So we want to make sure that we show that green because it is a significant public space for the city of Charlottesville. So we pulled that back in. We also updated the location of a Flint planned unit development area, which is a residential community near Frost Springs. We were showing this on the previous map, but not accurately. So we've been working with the city to make that update, to make sure that we're showing the location of that site properly. And also, as Jenny had mentioned, in the version that we uploaded late last week onto the website, there was a couple of part layers missing to that. So we made sure that we went back, turned those on. We didn't want to inadvertently show something that we shouldn't because that is an overlay to the map. So make sure that we went back and correctly showed that. And you can see that reflected in the maps presented tonight. Next slide, please. The residential land area is one of the largest geographical sized, the largest sized area in the city. And it makes up a large percentage of the acreage of the city. So it's very important. This is where people live. And so, and it's also been a core element to the thinking around how we developed the future land use map. And to help us identify where these residential areas are most appropriate in terms of intensity, we have developed five key principles that we've used to help establish how residential areas are distributed throughout cities. One, making sure that we're not relying just on cars and that we are fostering opportunities for multimodal communities, places where you can walk by access transit and make it less depend upon personal vehicles. Encouraging house size incremental development. We know that there are a number of single-family residential neighborhoods, and we're proposing more intensity of development, or at least infill in some cases. So we want to make sure whatever infill and how those neighborhoods evolve, that they are context-sensitive and that they are befitting of neighborhoods in which they're located. That lends itself to providing housing diversity. The more we increase opportunities for different types of housing throughout the city, the more equitable the city becomes. And we located areas of even greater intensity, or at least considered areas of even greater intensity of residential development, your schools, parks, shopping districts, and employment centers where people want to be. Where are those destinations that are walkable, or at least could be walkable, bikeable, transit accessible, and having opportunities for a greater variety of housing types near their location is something that we've worked into the plan. We want to make sure that we preserve existing structures where possible. We heard a lot of concerns, particularly around historic properties, areas in those sensitive neighborhoods that we'll be talking a little bit more about in the presentation. So to make sure we have that and take that in account, while also allowing for softens being in field, which would include things such as accessory dwelling units, which are smaller units that can be provided. And when I say units, units can be rental units. Units can be ownership units, such as a condo or townhouse. So just want to make sure that we're all clear that units can represent a homeownership opportunity or opportunity. And I want to make sure we provide opportunities for both types throughout the plan. And another element that we heard quite a bit about was opportunities to provide for organic growth of commercial uses throughout residential neighborhoods. Where could there be small coffee shops or other community-serving uses that can occur organically where they're needed throughout residential neighborhoods is another element of residential development that we have considered. And the images on the bottom just represent, are just represented images of different types of residential development. So you can see here, it just can range from a scale from least intensive with accessory dwelling units. And the image to the left, you can see a unit over a garage all the way up to higher intensity residential, where you get into more of the urban residential building type. Next slide, please.
Thanks, Ron. So yeah, just to enter these overall residential development principles that Ron just went through, I want to reiterate some elements of affordability because that's a huge piece of this, this process. We want to make sure we all have sort of a shared understanding of what affordability means moving forward. This question we get a lot. Housing is generally considered affordable if a household can obtain that housing along with other costs of housing, think utilities for 30% or less of their income. As we all know, incomes vary by person. So that definition will vary by person. What's affordable? This generally sort of follows guidelines from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, which defines cost burden households in terms of housing as those who spend 30% or more of income on gross housing costs, whether renter or ownership housing. It's important to note that for some levels of affordability, more subsidy may be needed to produce or support those homes. That's generally the case, for example, for those earning 30% of AMI or area median income, which in Charlottesville, 30% of AMI for a family is about $30,000 a year or below. So at that level, more significant subsidy may be needed. At other levels of affordability, think maybe above 80% AMI, land use policies and other strategies can have potentially a more significant impact. But even with that case, more subsidy, more support can can really help create more renter and ownership units that are affordable for more people. So just to reiterate what we talked about tonight, the land use map and the concepts we're talking about are looking to support this concept of affordability throughout the city for both renters and homeowners, for both current residents and potential future residents. And it's important to note, though, that in some cases, a future land use map really needs to be partnered with those other subsidies and initiatives to really support our goals. I know we've said that a lot. That's an important point to make. Now, I guess, let's dive into the refinements we're talking about and the concepts we want to bring out about the future land use map on the next slide, please. The first thing we want to talk about is what we're calling the sensitive community areas. What we're focusing on tonight is a proposal for how those may be implemented as we move forward. When we say sensitive community areas, we're talking about these areas with higher proportions of community members who are potentially sensitive to displacement pressures based on demographics. We've, we've used census block group data to provide a really quantitative way to support these community priorities. We've heard from many people who have expressed concerns about displacement for low-income or low-wealth communities, as well as black communities and other non-white residents. So we've, we've used these census block groups to do that, establish sort of a base to start from. And if you're not familiar with the census block group, I assume a lot of you probably are. If you're not, census block group is smaller than a census tract, but in Charlottesville, they're still cover a lot of area. So it's important to note, I think, in our current concept that we're talking about tonight, when we define these sensitive areas, we're not meant to say this will be a zoning overlay or that all of these areas will be, including the concepts we'll talk about tonight. But instead, we're meaning to delineate these areas that will be used in the zoning update, the zoning rewrite, to be studied for potential sort of parameters in the zoning code that will work to mitigate displacement pressures for the general residential areas, for that lowest intensity residential area within these sensitive communities. That was a question we've gotten quite a bit, comments, concerns about, you know, whether or not sensitive area concepts apply to mixed-use areas or higher intensity residential. And no, our intent is to talk about the general residential areas within those sensitive community areas. I'll note, you can see some of our policy goals for these areas on the slide, but we'll talk about them a bit more. So if you go to the next slide, please. We know it's important to talk about what we're talking about with what things will look like. Even when we talk about heights or scale of things, it's still hard to kind of grasp what that means. And so you'll see a lot more graphics in this presentation, which we know we've heard a desire to see. So the slide you're looking at right now is what sort of the general scale we're thinking about, the general types of housing we're thinking about when we envision what the sensitive community area, general residential areas may be. In general, we really want to reiterate that we think this, this still supports a range of housing types. These are just representative samples, but a wide variety of housing options will still be available under this or potential under this designation. Go to the next slide, please. We've already discussed, we intentionally want to go through what we're talking about with these community areas before we show them. But here you can see again how the, how those sensitive community areas, look, how these block groups look on the map. It's important to note, though, that, again, we're not saying these entire areas should be included. We know that during the zoning rewrite, if we follow this current process, these areas should be examined further, potentially refined to include only a portion of the general residential areas within them, or potentially adding on a portion that maybe does not fall within the block group, but on the ground is essentially the same community as we'd be identifying in those potentially sensitive to displacement. Like, I think with that, I will pass it off to Ron to go through what we're, or pass it back to Ron, rather, to go through what we're envisioning for these areas for the sensitive communities. So thanks, Ron.
Thank you. Next slide. So we begin to think about the sensitive community areas. We also not only think about where these areas are located on the map, but how they begin to translate to form use and how we integrate the element of affordability in these areas. We've heard a lot throughout the process that, you know, there's a desire to make sure that we're not including density just for the sake of density and that we are working in the element of affordability as much as possible. So we've taken it to heart. We've come up with a concept, and again, this is only a concept. We have a one-year-long zoning rewrite process that will follow, follow up to the comprehensive plan update. And we also have HRNA, who is now that contracted with the city to continue their work on refining some of the ideas of affordability. So the concept that we've outlined tonight is only a draft, and we'll be working to refine the recommendations of this draft. But at least it gives us a idea or a starting place that we can begin to develop more as we move into the next phase of plan development. So just to start with form and use, one of the key ideas of the sensitive areas is that we would allow one unit per lot and allow for additional units, only through a bonus program. And that bonus program is encompasses affordability. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in the next section of the slide. As far as height, we are sticking to the missing middle typical height of two and a half stories as a base height. But we will consider opportunities for additional height through the bonus program. And we'll talk a little bit about the bonus program now. So the affordability bonus will allow for additional units to be created above the base amount to include more affordable. So more for, so the more affordable the units are, the more units you could potentially have on a lot. And of course, that takes in consideration, or will need to take into consideration, site context, development area. We know that there are constrained sites within these sensitive community areas that will limit the number of units that you get per lot. But as a general framework, this is a starting point for how we can begin to think about how we can increase opportunities for affordability throughout these areas. So one, allow to three units per lot. If the first unit meets affordability requirement. So this is putting affordability first. So you cannot add a unit onto a lot unless you have that first unit that meets the criteria of affordability. And that criteria will be developed as part of our work with HRNA and through the zone process. So you can get three units, you get two extra units if that first unit is affordable. You can get four units if the existing house is maintained and at least one affordable unit is provided. So what we're doing here is trying to limit or at least contain the opportunities for demolition within these communities. We heard a lot of concern about tear downs and the negative effect that could cause on these sensitive community areas. So having that bonus program of allowing more units with protection, or at least maintaining that existing house and including enough element of affordability, we thought would be kind of a second layer of this that we can consider. And as I had mentioned before, the level of affordability requirements will be determined through the zoning rewrite process, as well as the refinement of how this affordability bonus work, establishing what the maximum height is, the number of units, making sure that we're working closely with HRNA to make sure that we're putting forth recommendations that work for the community. We know that there's also a number of existing plexes or structures that have more than one unit on a site today. So we want to make sure that we continue to support that housing type, which often includes affordable housing types. So we'll make sure that we include that. And again, I'll iterate that units could be rental units, or they could be homeownership units. We want to make sure that we provide opportunities for homeownership throughout all areas of residential development within the city. Next. And alternatively, Code Studio.
Thanks, Ron. I'm Christy Dodson with Code Studio, and I'm joined by Lee Ainswiler. And we are part of the team at Code Studio, and you will be seeing much more of us as this project transitions from the Conference and Development Plan into the zoning ordinance rewrite. So we have been working with RHI closely as they've been refining the details of the Conference Development Plan. And we want to just walk through some of the ideas that we're thinking about that could be potential tools as we move into zoning. And Ron mentioned a lot of them. So these will sound familiar. But to reiterate that, once the Conference Development Plan is adopted, those are going to be the guiding policies that we will implement through the ordinance rewrite. And so part of that process, we're starting to think about what some of these potential zoning tools could be. And in these sensitive areas, the first thing that we have heard is very important is keeping the existing house. So as Ron mentioned, a lot of these sensitive areas, they contain a lot of existing duplexes, triplexes, and we want to make sure that those are able to be maintained. And they're able to be improved. We don't want to see any loss of housing units in these areas. And so it's going to be important to be able to maintain and be able to improve those structures. The other thing that we also think could help incentivize keeping the main house, you know, that's, that's part of keeping some of that naturally occurring affordability is incentivizing keeping the house by, by giving that extra unit. As Ron mentioned, keeping the existing house, it's being proposed, would then allow you to go up to four units. And that existing house can, can be your affordable unit. And these are often legacy homeowners. They often have a lower income. And so that can be counted as your affordable unit. And then you can add additional units, either on the back or as an ADU. So providing that flexibility and incentivizing keeping that main house. Another critical component of this is going to be calibrating what the FAR, the floor area ratio is going to be for these areas. What we want to avoid is one small modest house being replaced with a much larger, much more expensive house. So that's the concern with allowing one unit by right. And so what we want to do is incentivize these. And so what we want to do is incentivize these, these units to be smaller. So we would calibrate the FAR so that if, if a new home is to be constructed, it would be of modest size and scale similar to what's existing in these communities already. And then we would allow a little bit more FAR as additional units are provided. And so it's incentivizing those additional units. Next slide, please. Another thing that we're thinking about and will certainly be evaluating during the zoning ordinance rewrite is the subdivision ordinance. We think it is important to allow some subdivision of lots. Charlottesville has a lot of larger properties that could be subdivided into smaller parcels, which is going to provide additional opportunity to provide units. I know there's been some discussion about that already. And so that's, that's one idea that we're thinking about of how to right size some of the smart, a lot of the larger parcels into smaller ones, provide additional units. Another thing that we're thinking about when particularly we're talking about AUs, the ability to develop things in a fee simple model provides a lot more options from a financing standpoint. It's a lot easier for an existing homeowner to essentially subdivide the rear of their property and have someone else build the ADU. So they don't have to be an expert in building and development. And so thinking about how that primary lot may potentially be subdivided in a way that allows for fee simple development. And an additional tool that we're thinking about is putting a maximum or somehow controlling lot mergers. You know, this ties back to our FAR. If you have a larger lot, you're, you're able to build bigger houses. And what we want to do is, is try to incentivize those lots to be smaller and try to avoid essentially, you know, someone coming in purchasing several lots in a row in order to build a significant more expensive structure. So wanting to incentivize those smaller lots to, to provide more affordability, both naturally and through this bonus program. And then finally parking, the having to provide parking impacts the cost of construction. And so something that we will be considering in the ordinance rewrite is potentially reducing parking requirements for these affordable units to help control some of those construction costs.
Next, please. So of course we have the sensitive areas, but we also have larger cities that will be covered on the general residential category, this general residential category and it's outside of the sensitive community areas. And Jenny had shown a number of images that show how infill could occur in existing lot where you can save existing house infill with additional units. Here are a couple of other examples just to show how that can occur, occur in many different forms. And as we work through the zoning rewrite process, we will explore many opportunities of how we can begin to encourage and show opportunity for how infill could happen at existing home sites throughout the city. Next slide. Again, just to remind everyone that Charlottesville currently has a lot of single family, one unit residential lots throughout the city. And because of this, there are not as many opportunities for more naturally affordable or affordable units throughout the city because we have less units. So that's something that we are looking to overcome by allowing for more infill of existing sites. These areas outside of the sensitive areas are ones that identify not as sensitive or less sensitive to displacement pressures versus the sensitive areas that we just discussed that are outlined in the purple, in the burgundy hons on the map. Again, the goals of housing covered the five points from the earlier slide. We want to make sure that we encourage a diverse cross section of housing types throughout the city so that we can have housing that's available at a variety of affordability levels for residents in Charlottesville. Next slide, please. So form and use general residential, very similar to what we showed in August, allowing up to three units per lot. But we can, we will consider allowing additional units per lot based upon provided affordable units. So if you provide affordable units, you can go beyond the three units per lot. The first three units could be market rate. We're hoping that through encouraging more units per lot, we begin to encourage or introduce naturally occurring affordable units in these general residential areas. And then of course, allowing for the more affordable units through the bonus program where that doesn't naturally occur or on top of the naturally occurring affordable units and three units per lot. We're still continuing with our two and a half stories of a base height within the general residential category. But again, through the bonus program where affordability requirements are met, can explore opportunities for additional height within these general residential categories. Again, the height being refined through the zoning process and how that works with the bonus program. Again, the affordability bonus, very similar to the elements that we outlined for the sensitive areas, making sure that we accommodate 60, 80% AMI or better within these areas, you know, affordability bonus program. The deeper the affordability that's provided, the more units that could be allowed to again, occur, encourage that affordability throughout these general residential areas. And this is just one concept that we're exploring. We will, as I had mentioned before, be working as a team through the one year zoning rewrite to really refine these approaches as we move forward. Cause that's something that will need to be done. Next slide, please. And I'll turn it back over to Codes Studio.
Thanks, Ron. And a lot of these will look fairly similar to some of the ideas that we're talking about in the sensitive areas, particularly when we're thinking about lot dimensions. We think that being able to consider how the subdivision ordinance could be revised to allow some of these larger lots to be subdivided is going to be a useful tool in general residential, even outside of the sensitive areas. And then again, that same idea of allowing potentially secondary lots to be subdivided to allow for things like ADUs. And you know, we can get into more detail of how that would actually work during the zoning ordinance rewrite, but that, that is separate. It's a different idea than just a pure subdivision. And again, that allows for seat, the simple development in those rear yards, which is a really useful tool when it comes to ADU construction. And it provides that really critical wealth flowing opportunity for existing homeowners. Again, looking at reduced parking requirements for affordable units, being able to have that flexibility so that the site isn't fully taken out by parking is going to be really important as we think about how to allow for more units, particularly at an affordable cost. And then the final thing that we are going to take a lot of time to consider in the zoning ordinance rewrite is how we'll be able to deploy the two over two townhomes that has, we've heard that's going to be a really critical tool in being able to provide affordable housing in Charlottesville. And so what we're thinking about from a zoning perspective is how those two over two townhomes can be deployed in a context sensitive way. So thinking about how that building width, how that building height can be in, it fits in with the context of the existing fabric of Charlotte. So so the way those, those buildings are massed, that'll be something that we're going to be talking about in the zoning ordinance rewrite of how to control those in a way that allows them to be built and provide that affordable housing, but allows it to be done in a context sensitive way.
Next slide, please. And then the next level up in intensity from general residential with our medium intensity category and the medium intensity can include any of the examples that we showed for the general residential or sensitive community area, all of the precedent images that show building additions, single family conversions. All those different approaches can be also applied to the medium intensity residential category. But medium intensity includes more opportunities for more units per lot. For instance, you can see here the multiplexes still encouraging limited commercial use where it makes sense throughout these districts and two over two stack townhouses is something that we heard a lot of desire for. So exploring even more opportunities for that type of development along these medium intensive, intensity residential areas, which are located along corridors and your parks and open spaces and other community amenities. So we're getting more people where those community amenities exist. Next slide. So again, just to iterate, reiterate our approach to medium intensity residential, we want to increase opportunities for more affordable housing near neighborhood corridors. Again, a lot of these medium intensity areas are along corridors of the city that support transit and other multimodal elements. Near community amenities such as parks and open spaces and schools, employment centers. Thinking about those corridors that connect major activity nodes throughout the city. So providing walkable walkable, multimodal access to those employment centers. And within neighborhoods that have been traditionally unaffordable. So we're again diversifying housing types to make a more distributed opportunity for different land use types or, or residential types throughout the city. And again, hitting on the same goals that we covered before, those five key elements then inform how we locate and think about medium intensity residential uses. Next slide. So just as with the other residential categories, we've outlined form and use and affordability. The definition has largely stayed intact for medium intensity residential areas allowing up to 12 units per lot. We know that many lots, all the lots in the city are very unique. They're different from neighborhood to neighborhood, from lot to lot. And we know that 12 units is not achievable on every lot that we're showing as medium intensity residential. And that there'll be a range of number of units that could be accommodated on these lots. So as we begin to define the parameters of site development through the zoning rewrite, that will begin to inform how many actual units you can get per lot within these areas. So I just want to reiterate that we're not saying 12 units per lot everywhere that we're showing medium intensity category. That's just a maximum that has been established for this land use category. And then allowing four stories for medium intensity residential. So a story higher or at least a story and a half higher from the general intensity category that we covered in previous slides. And then again, incorporating the element of affordability, we'll be working with HRNA and our zone team to refine, to refine how affordability bonus could also work for the medium intensity residential area. Again, we want to make sure that we're encouraging as much affordability in these residential areas as possible. And that may also be fine that the allowable number of units or floors as we continue through that process as well. Next slide, please. Other land use categories, we have higher intensity residential, mixed use node categories and corridors have largely remained intact from what we showed in the August 31st iteration. We have heard a lot of comments regarding building height in mixed use areas and higher intensity residential areas where perhaps you could consider as part of a bonus program, these locations allow for additional heights. Some specific locations that we heard about, for example, would be JPA Fontaine Avenue corridor area, kind of just to the, to the south of UVA is the area that for example, could encourage more student housing development that could relieve pressure on surrounding neighborhoods and have more student housing concentrated in a key strategic location. As well as we heard comments from the community regarding the image street US 29 corridor, perhaps allowing additional height at that location because it is more secluded from residential areas and that is a commercial corridor already. And that perhaps that area could support more height. So that's something that we'll consider moving forward as to how we can begin to incorporate some of those ideas into the zoning. But we can certainly outline them as part of the chat, as a plan. And then of course, making sure that we weave affordability through all of these different residential and mixed use categories where residential uses are present through inclusionary zoning ordinance. And with that, I will turn it back over to Jenny.
Thanks, Ron. Just one more slide and then we'll get into discussion. If you go to them, thank you. We included a few questions here. We know planning commission will have more tonight. We'll look forward to that. And we know a community will also have some comments. I want to note for those who are on the call but can't see how many attendees there are, there are 134 attendees. And so we look forward to hearing from you as well. But to speak to these, these questions here briefly, again, just a few of the many we know there are. The first question is, we've heard a bit of is why we're not outlining specific levels of affordability or specific numbers of bonus units to be allowed. And those are two separate things related potentially as we're proposing. And the reason for that is that the analyses that we're looking forward to in the zoning rewrite process will be part of what's used, an important part of what's used to determine how to best support these various levels of affordability throughout the city. So we don't want to predetermine the outcome of that analysis. It's been a part of this process from the beginning that the zoning rewrite will follow the comprehensive plan update. So we want to respect that process. But to the second question, we've heard proposals for requiring that units at specific affordability levels are built prior to building market rate units throughout the city, which is something in some ways we're proposing for the sensitive community areas, but not for outside of those areas. And we believe that requiring affordable units to be built first before the market rate units everywhere may lead to less housing produced across the city, including fewer affordable units. And part of the reason for that is that property owners, you know, may find it difficult in some cases to support affordable units without a significant subsidy. And part of our goal of this process is to, you know, provide, provide a range of ways to support more housing options and more affordability. Lastly, we know there's an interest in knowing the total amount of housing units that would be produced under this map. And you know, we know it's clear to everyone, most, most everyone who's listening that the future land use map will not be mandating that housing, affordable or otherwise, will be built. Real range of possibilities will be allowed through the future land use map as Ron and Christie have talked through. And you know, the markets subsidies and the future zoning ordinance will determine what is built and where and how, and how that would work. And so because zoning controls and other elements will further determine how much development is possible on each site. And zoning, the zoning rewrite will potentially redefine some of those controls such as lot size and setbacks. We're not currently defining a specific number of units that would be possible under the zoning ordinance because the updated zoning ordinance is what would be implementing the future land use map. So those are just a few questions. Again, we look forward to more. But if you go to the next slide, that, that wraps up our presentation portion. So we're ready to move into discussion with the planning commission unless I want to note, I don't know, Chair Sully Yates, if you all would like to take a five minute break. I assume that's desirable at some point in the evening, perhaps after a discussion, but I'll let you determine, determine that. I would ask though, sorry to cut you off. Before we go to that, Joe, if you wouldn't mind making Philip Cash a panelist, I believe he's in the attendee list.
Sure, will do. Thanks, Jenny.
Thank you so much. Without a handoff to you.
Thank you. I'm feeling strong. Can I get a thumbs up, thumbs down on a break?
I don't think we need a break.
I think we're good. Let's proceed. I'd like to start out with sort of commissioner statements and questions. You can do whichever it makes you comfortable. Let's start with Mr. Mitchell.
Questions and maybe a statement, but I'll start with a question. The question is for Christie. You talked, slide 16 talks a little, talks a little bit about the subdivision regulation. And I want to be certain that we are tightening the loophole so that folks don't get to get around the affordability requirement by, by doing subdivisions. Can you talk a little bit about how we protect against getting around the loophole, the affordability loophole using subdivisions?
Yes, thank you for that question. I'm also going to
Yes, thank you for that question. I'm also going to let Lee Einzweiler introduce himself. I believe he's on the call and I'll let him.
Leave the spark.
Yes. Yeah, it is. That's Lee in the background. That's very excited about the male person coming. Yeah, so I'm going to let Lee introduce himself and let him have an opportunity to answer first and then I'll add anything to it.
Sorry, took me a moment to unmute myself. So unfortunately subdivision is still something that people will be able to do. And we don't know whether we will be able to work out a legal way to constrain what happens on newly subdivided lots as we move forward. So we don't really have a strict answer. What could happen today, if you had a lot that was twice the size that the district requires, you could split your lot into two, one with your existing house and do all the things you could do on your existing house side. And you would have another lot. You could use that lot for just one house. That's a possibility. However, you'd be leaving a lot of, of development potential on the table. So if you were doing it for reasons of, of adding value to your property, you would either be building a very, very, very high luxury but modest sized house. Or you, you'd just be missing out on the income potential that would be associated with, with other units that would be allowed on the site. So we don't, we don't have a perfect answer. We're going to look into some things with Lisa Robertson, the attorney, and see whether there are, for example, would we be allowed to set a minimum number of units for a new lot? So that we could get you up and require you to be in that affordable zone or not. But we're not certain what we can do right this minute, and it will probably take us a little bit to get that research done.
Okay, there, there's so much good about this that I'm hoping that you can work with Ms. Robertson to, to find a way to, to close that loophole. Because there's so much good about managing the subdivision regulation well to get more affordable housing. And so I don't know, Mr. Chair, if I can ask Ms. Ms. Robertson if she's got some thoughts or guidance or that.
Good evening. Yes, I'm, I've spoken with the consultants and what I'd like to do, if it's acceptable to you all, is exactly what they've just said. I think we have to think through this going forward and work things out in the process of developing the zoning ordinance. What I can tell you right now is that in general, your authority to do things is much broader under the zoning enabling legislation than it is under the subdivision. So I think through some combination of updated subdivision regulations and creative measures under the zoning ordinance, I think you can, I think there's a lot of possibilities, but I don't think we're ready to rule anything out or rule anything specifically in tonight.
Okay, so I think what you're doing is counseling patients that we think we can do this, but it may have to happen at the zoning level.
Yeah, or at least with some combination of enhanced zoning and subdivision regulations. I, I do think that as we go forward, what we'll be watching for during the development of the zoning regulations is any adjustments and updates that are needed in the subdivision ordinance as well. Because the, quite frankly, the, the development regulations, sort of the infrastructure standards are, are driven by your subdivision ordinance and they, they relate to how development occurs once those subdivisions take place. So everything's related, but I, I think that working together, there are a lot of things that we can do if not to achieve perfectly the recommendations to, to get very close to, to what is being recommended.
Mr. Chair, I am very comfortable with Lisa Lee's input and recommendation that counsel for, for patients when we get there. If I haven't, if I have time, I'd like to ask another question.
One, please.
Question is for Ron and maybe Jenny. The, the affordability overlay is hinted at throughout the presentation that Ron did. But it is that, it's not in your face, it's not, we're not very direct about talking about that. Can you talk a little bit about where we are on the affordability overlay and how this plays into what you guys have presented? And could you, because we, we'd like to see, we, I would like to see it, I think my colleagues on the virtual dias would also like to see it more intentional. Can you talk about why it's not more intentional and what your game plan is on that for Ron and for Jenny, please?
I can start it out. So we, instead of having a distinguished overlay, we bait in the affordability into land use categories. So you can see through the affordability bonus programs. We kind of baked it in. We thought that was a better approach than the overlay because it's baked into the land, it'll be baked into the zoning versus an overlay, which adds another layer of complication on top of the zoning district. So we thought that that would be more of a simple, more inclusive approach than to having a distinguished overlay at this point. Could we consider splitting out to overlay in the zoning rewrite? That's not off the table, but at this point, we're thinking that affordability is just baked into everything that we do for each of the land use categories.
So your strategy is to make it more implicit than more, for lack of a better term, in your face?
Yeah, I think that, and maybe I didn't describe through it well enough, but I think we've kind of put it in your face with the sensitive communities, one unit per lot, no more units unless it's affordable for the sensitive areas and then with the general residential beyond the three units, having that naturally occurring affordability through the three units per lot. And then providing bonus for more intensity for more affordable units and the deeper the affordability, the more units that could be allowed as a strategy. And then the inclusionary zoning, we through all the mixed use districts, the higher intensity residential districts, having that bait through so that we're including affordability at every land use category that includes residential development has been our approach.
And I'm pretty cool with, with that, every land use development, having it there. I just don't want to make, I want us to be careful about not focusing the affordability in the sensitive areas. Because we've done a good job of figuring out a way to increase affordability in the sensitive areas. I applaud that. But we need affordability in some of the other neighborhoods as well, some of the, some of the, some of the neighborhoods that are not sensitive areas.
Yeah.
So just keep that in mind as you think through this, because again, good job on sensitive areas. Wow, great. I'm thrilled. But again, we need to expand that affordability out to areas that have not traditionally been Mr. Chair, are you?
Thank you very much. Mr. Habat, questions, comments?
Thanks, Chair. Let's see, Isaiah took my questions out of my mouth. But I wanted to, I guess to expand on the first question on the loopholes. I think the intention is, you know, what stops somebody from breaking down their lot into three unit sized lots over and over to kind of get away from providing an affordable unit? Just whatever we can do to look at that later on as needed. I, I like the language changes throughout. It seems like a lot of the numbers that needed some feasibility study to them were kind of pushed off to the zoning rewrite. That makes sense, and I appreciate all the language that you guys used to bacon the affordability. And I wanted to ask how strict, you did touch upon this a little bit, but how strict are the lot designations that we see on the future land use map? Like can one lot, one over get a different designation as we're doing the rezoning process or how does that happen?
Yeah, well, I'll speak to that, but I'd invite Ron or Lee or anyone else from the team to join me. Thanks, cream. Yeah, we've, we've talked about that quite a bit. And I think there are a couple of things I would note. One is that the land use map, which I think what you're getting at maybe is it's a guide, right? For, for future land use, it's a, it's going to be a guide for the zoning. It won't be exactly one to one. So we, you know, I think there is potential to be flexible, like you said, if, if it's adjacent or to, to a different category, we could potentially look at bringing that into a different sort of category than it's currently shown as. We've also, you know, there is the possibility that if we get to the finalizing of the zoning ordinance and we've realized, we think the future land use map, you know, may need some adjustment at a larger scale. There is a possibility to, to do that as well. So we're keeping the door open for both of those things.
Great. Thanks. The last thing I had was also about the, the general residential. I know at the end of the anticipated questions, you kind of looked at this a little bit on why not the first unit or the second unit become the affordable unit, and that might be, that might hamper any development at these sites. But I don't know if we want to take another look at how to ensure that affordability gets built in these zones. And maybe including townhomes in the general residential category as one of the additional types, as well as looking at, considering maybe bringing the 2.5 stories back to maybe three. I know it was three and a half, a couple of drafts ago, we went down to two and a half. If there's a happy middle of three, but something to consider also. Thanks.
And thank you. Mr. Lohindra, comments and questions?
Yeah, I'll start with questions. So in the city's ADC historic and conservation districts, all of the buildings have been identified as either contributing or non-contributing to the historic resource designation. And the, and, and it varies district by district from as little as 10% are non-contributing to the Woolenbills, almost 40% of the buildings are non-contributing. So there's all, there's opportunities for, for replacing non-contributing buildings with infill and more units. What would you, what is your reaction to adding a requirement that any future development with ADC historic and conservation districts, they must maintain the contributing status of the existing historic structures?
All right, I was rapidly tapping notes. Ron, did you have thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think that that would be something that we would definitely want to consider. I think there's many opportunities to add units to a lot that has a contributing structure on it through building addition off the rear, you know, keeping the form and the character of the front of that structure intact, but allowing opportunities particularly in lots that have a lot of depth to have opportunities for infill at the rear of the building, for example. So we definitely think there's opportunity and we want to keep with our theme of making sure that we're proposing contextual infill throughout these areas. So I think that language would certainly begin to benefit that, that end that we've been discussing.
Yeah, and you're right in that, that language doesn't prohibit additions to historic contributing buildings if they're done compatively and, and they can still be, keep their contribution to the historic district. It just, well, I won't explain why. Another question. What is, what is your reaction to replacing the recommendations for general residential with those proposed for general residential in sensitive areas?
So, yeah, you go ahead, Jenny.
So I think that gets to our, one of those FAQs we had on, on the slide in terms of why, why we're not proposing to require sort of the first new unit be affordable in all, all areas. And our, our response to that, as you may recall, was because we believe that market rate component would, would help support additional development of affordable housing throughout the city. You know, if, if someone wants to be able to provide some additional units on their property and they are an individual homeowner, it could become, or would likely become potentially out of the, the range they could afford if, if the first one had to be affordable because they might not, they might not be able to sort of recoup costs of that in some ways like they would with some market development to balance that out. I do think we could look in the zoning ordinance and I would invite Lee to, to speak on this too. We could look in the zoning ordinance at potentially having lower market rates, sort of levels in some areas than others. You know, we're posing up to three now in general residential outside of sensitive areas. I think we could, you know, include that as, as part of our, our work on the zoning ordinance. Lee, is there anything else you would add?
No, but I, I do think it's fine to assume that there might be multiple districts that implement a single color on the future land use map and that those might have slight variations on the policy that we're setting out for the category as a whole. And so yes, it's fair to say we should look at some of those issues when we get to the zoning for sure.
I'd also invite Philip from HRNA to respond, but I see, I believe he's back in the attendee list. So we may need to bump him up there potentially. Or perhaps he could speak to that in a bit.
Jenny, I just promoted him.
Thank you.
Mr. Cash?
I'm done.
Mr. Cash, please unmute your mic.
I think he's still in the attendee.
I see that he's been, he's declining to be promoted, so I'll try again. And if he can hear us, Mr. Cash, I am going to try to promote you one more time.
He didn't like my question at all.
We've spoken with him about this question. Well, we'd be happy to follow up with the, for any further comments from Philip.
I can, we can also just allow him to speak through the attendee if that'll help. There might be a technical issue that we're having.
That seems fine.
Thank you, love.
Mr. Cash, can you hear us?
Please unmute your mic.
Perhaps he had to step away from the computer. As I noted, we're happy to follow up with him on that question, if not, if not during the meeting at a, at a through by email or otherwise.
Thank you. Ms. Russell, questions and comments?
Sure, thanks. I sort of want to drill down on some themes I've heard already. I agree that the, there are elements in the sensitive areas that I could see applying to the general residential as well. Purely the affordability bonus, keeping, you know, a fourth unit if the house is, is maintained. The, just, it just seems like there are some places, sensitive neighborhoods and historic areas that overlap and both tools could apply to, to, to characteristics in both neighborhoods. I, I'm seeing and I'm hearing tensions in the proposed medium residential areas, particularly in locations that aren't necessarily arterial or are, you know, have constrained streets or that have existing affordability existing already. And then, and then noting conflicts with, and I want to clarify from what Commissioner Lohindra was. Commissioner Lohendra was asking there, we have, we have ADC districts, we have national register listed, we have national register potentially eligible. Are we talking about tools to protect historic resources in all of those areas or only the ones that are that are ADC?
We would want to protect all the historic structures and I think that that's something that we can expand upon and definitely to perhaps pull out more explicitly in the text, in the definition of these land use categories. Historic structures are very important to the character of the community. Cultural integrity of many of these areas. So we definitely want to respect that and make sure that we build that language into these land use districts. We imagine through the zoning process to keep the historic districts as lines on the map. So we are going to keep that intact. We're not thinking about getting rid of that. But I think weaving in the story of protection of historic structures more explicitly in these language classifications, something we can certainly do.
Although I would note for those, sorry to interrupt you, Liz, for those that are eligible but not listed, that's something we haven't discussed yet, how 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 that, so that I would, I would just say that was one qualification.
Yeah, and that and that's something that I'm concerned about where potential medium, medium intensity may be may may pose an adverse effect to to the eligibility of those of those rights. And I and I wouldn't support that. I'm wondering if there's in a way that there isn't, oh, you know, if medium couldn't be more tightly controlled through the SUP process. I mean, I know we want affordability and and, you know, we want processes to be as streamlined as possible. And I'm sort of worried we're giving away all the all the control with with what I see as like an alarming amount of medium intensity by right, particularly in some of these neighborhoods that have potential incompatibility. So, you know, does that mean that it needs an additional level of control or is highly inclusionary or medium intensely intensity only if deeply affordable? I would encourage you to look at that. And then finally, I just want to make a point to the, you know, we've been talking about the first unit requirement being affordable and one of the goals, though, of course, we want to encourage affordability. We should remember that one of the goals of the accessory dwelling units are to allow for things like aging in place and allowing for someone to build. This was pointed out to me by a community member. So allowing for the construction of granny flats. We certainly wouldn't want to prohibit that, you know, cut our nose despite our face in in just requiring affordability. So how can we be flexible? Maybe it's in tightening up our, I hate to say it, Airbnb regulations. And so that's, that's all from me.
Thank you for for pointing out that element of aging in place. That is a really key aspect here as well.
And Mr. Stolzenberg, questions and comments?
Thanks. Yeah, I think Commissioner Russell made some very good points there. I would agree with this, the idea of taking in that incentive to keep the existing home and fold that into the outside of general residential to get that fourth unit. I'd also say, you know, on top of that, when it's a new build, whether on a vacant lot or on a, you know, new subdivision lot. A new build fourplex is when acceptability requirements kick in. And so if we we do care about aging in place and and our disability community, I think it's really important to again offer that incentive. Otherwise, it becomes a cliff where costs rise when you hit that and it's going to be harder to get that that fourth unit exactly as as the affordable one. So I've got a couple of questions. I guess the first, I can kind of see how the outside of sensitive like with the bonus program is starting to converge with medium intensity in in similar way to how the overlay proposal discussed. So the big question to me in my mind is like, to what extent is that true? Like, we talk about bonuses, which presumably, which obviously gets you more units beyond that third. But what is the top end or is there a top end envisioned? Or is it kind of unspecified for now, which means we might cut it off at five or does it mean we might cut it off at eight? Depending on what we can get.
Uh, yeah, unspecified for now, as you know, is to respond to your question directly. And the reason for that is that we I think we don't want to get ahead of one direction or the other. We don't want to propose something where a higher number would be possible or supported through incentives or other mechanisms that we might discuss in zoning. We don't want to go to to high if that won't really be feasible for some reason. So that's, that's why we're not giving that that sort of upper end right now.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable, as long as we're not saying, you know, we're just going to have a fourth unit and we're going to somehow expect that to be affordable without a bonus. Obviously, that's implied by the idea of a bonus that there is an incentive. The flip side of that is with the medium intensity, I think some people are, including me, are still having heartburn about the locations of certain ones of those medium intensity corridors, like the recently added one on on Riverview. The Lexington kind of loop instead of perhaps Locust and Park on the other sides. Can you provide some insight on why there rather than maybe the more connected places that are on the same transit routes and in the same general area?
Yeah, Ron, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, so perhaps I can start off with the review corridor. We did get some comments about why that corridor shown as medium intensity. One, there are 40 duplex buildings along that corridor, 80 units. That corridor does have a transit route, so it is a cul-de-sac, but it is directly accessible by transit. In the Streets That Work program, there are two priority bike lane corridors that directly connect that area back to downtown that would include Chesapeake Street and Market Street and Chesapeake Avenue as two corridors that connect back that area to downtown, which is a major employment center in the community. It's also immediately adjacent to the Ravenna River and the park and open space and trail connections along that corridor as well. That those trail connections extend further south in the city, further to the north and connect many places and destinations along the river. So there was some more thinking around. And also, there are Charlottesville housing redevelopment authority properties along that corridor. So allowing for greater flexibility of how those properties evolve, perhaps in the future for more affordable units at those sites was another consideration that we gave to that area. So really looking at what's there now with the 80 duplex units, what's around it with the resources, the natural resources, the cultural park and open space resources and those transit connections landed us to designate that area as a medium intensity area. Going back over, I guess, we move towards the north of downtown area along the Evergreen corridor that we heard a lot of concerns about. Yes, a lot of the streets in north downtown, in the north downtown area are constrained. We heard a lot of desire throughout this planning process to allow more opportunities for affordable housing development in that neighborhood. If you can recall, some of the earlier iterations of the future land use map included medium intensity along Park Street and along Locust Avenue, you know, we heard a lot of pushback for a lot of the reasons that we had talked about those historic structures, particularly along those corridors. And perhaps looking more inward to some of the communities between those two corridors is opportunities to encourage more medium intensity development. We went through several iterations of the map. Now we kind of focused on the Lexington Avenue and the Evergreen corridor. We heard concerns about traffic. We've gotten some traffic data about the capacity of that corridor. It's 60% capacity right now. So that corridor has room for capacity. We're not focusing on entirely on cars and vehicles as we talk through our housing principles. We want to encourage walking, biking, transit access. There's no transit directly on Evergreen, but just one block over along Locust is a major transit border. It's walking distance, it's walkable to downtown, which is one of the major employment centers and commercial centers of the city. So that's why we select those two areas for medium intensity. But we're more than willing to take a second look at those areas. We know that, you know, in general residential, we are including bonus density incentives as part of that now. So maybe that could be what we need in north downtown. So we're definitely open to taking a closer look at that given the direction.
Yeah, I guess I I wouldn't necessarily say they're bad of myself. And I think the bonus elsewhere kind of helps take some of that pressure off on the general overlay idea. I I might say that, you know, perhaps along Chesapeake, especially near Mead Park and up Second Street. In fact, I can think of a large vacant lot very close downtown on on Second Street Northeast and everything west of First Street North, which is currently designated to high and high density in the current map might also or instead be good places to think about as you potentially reconfigure that. I have kind of two quick other points. Hopefully I make this quick. One is for townhomes in general residential, especially, but not necessarily just outside of sensitive areas. I guess I just don't see why we would perhaps allow three units but not allow them to be three units that are under fee simple ownership with separate doors, especially as we have all this kind of new demand of kind of wealthier people from bigger cities who are now able to work remote coming in and looking for ownership opportunities. And on the flip side, where we're really hearing that low income and affordable homeownership opportunities are very much desirable. So I think incorporating townhomes into general residential would be a really big step. With caveat that I think the same rules of of amount and bonuses and affordability requirements should apply. So if you hit, you know, that fourth unit as part of a single development, I don't see any reason why it wouldn't be the exact same as if it's a fourth unit within an existing building. Lastly, I think I always talk about general and medium has taken a lot of the air out of the room from what I'd like to just address quickly because we've heard many comments on it, commercial areas and brownfield and grayfield sites that could potentially be better utilized and and take some pressure off of all these existing built out residential areas. We've heard a lot of demand for people who are concerned or a lot of, you know, concerns for people who are worried about changes in residential areas. And I want to make sure that we're really kind of soaking up as much of that pressure and making the absolute most of our commercial areas to the maximum extent we can in order to to help address those concerns and and to reduce the rate and pace of change in those built out areas. So the ones I talked, I point to specifically the hydraulic 29 area, big shopping centers, a little bit decrepit. Hopefully, we won't get a big lease and stay the same way for 40 more years, but will instead change. I think if we're really thinking about making the most of them and somehow making that a walkable place that we're plopping in with lots of people out of nowhere, maybe we need to think thinking about, you know, even more intense development than is contemplated there now and and higher heights because it's not really near anyone and there's no real impacts on sort of almost anyone nearby. The other is the scrapyard site at Meeting Carlton. That's like 30 feet below grade. It's again a scrapyard in Duck Grill. And I think it's proposed for three stories under the mixed use node now. And I really think that that site, which is so close to downtown, so close to that new infrastructure of that East Water Street path and street, East Water Street extended that, you know, it's really just right there, five minute walk away. And it's a great site that we could definitely make more use of.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of questions about context. We've heard a lot about house size and I've heard concerns about what a house is. People have different ideas. Is house size sort of a one, one size fits all that will be applied to all areas? Will that be context specific? How will that work?
I'd like to invite Ron or or Lee to respond to that.
Respond first.
Or both.
Go ahead, Ron.
So I think Lee had mentioned before that each of these land use colored areas will be broken down into sub-districts and we'll have to, as we get into the zoning, really identify the typology of these these different neighborhoods throughout the city. A house size in one neighborhood will be different than a house size in another neighborhood because of lot configuration and existing development and the error of development and and those types of things. So that's something that we'll look closely at from a zoning district by zoning district level to determine what those, what that building envelope looks like for a house size structure.
I got nothing to add to that. That was, that was really good, Ron. Thank you.
That was beautifully put. Thank you. I've heard some concerns from residents in some areas where they have more more floors. They've got, you know, three floors in some areas. How will the 2.5 metric work in those areas that are taller?
You mean in in areas that currently have structure houses that are up to three floors? I guess, again, with Lee or Ron, one of you like to speak to that?
I should probably tackle that one. And I mean, if we were absolutist about it, they would be non-conforming but allowed to continue. You could rebuild it if they were damaged by, you know, fire or storm or something like that exactly as it was. So you did minimum have those rights. But I don't think that if we found areas with significant three-story houses that we would set the context at two and a half, we would set it at three. So we have to, we have to see what we are going to see. We're happy to look for some of those areas. People have ideas about where those are that would also be helpful.
And also note, sorry, if I may, I think the, and Ron and Lee, please correct me, it's a potential bonus system would potentially allow structures up up to those heights. So that just to add on to what Lisa said.
Thank you. Questions and comments from council, please?
I had a couple of questions. First, I've I've been thinking more about the plight of one particular caller that we've heard from a couple of different times. Ms. Baez on who lives up the end of Amherst Street, whose general residential lot would butt right up against a medium intensity lot. And she's concerned about an 18-unit apartment building being put plunked down basically right next to her house. We have heard, I have heard that the one of the, some of the primary enemies of density are things like setbacks, lot size requirements, floor area ratios and those things that limit density, but they are also what mediate between dissimilar uses. How are you all expecting to 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 balance those two very different, almost opposing concerns in trying to figure out how we can reassure Ms. Baez on that she's not going to have this monstrosity in her backyard?
I think we can expect that along any district boundary line, so along a lot line that has differing allocation of height, for example, or unit types that we would have a transition along that lot line. What those might look like, you know, not fully worked out, that's something for the zoning to work out, but there will definitely be a transition. There might be a transition in the actual district supply, right? So in the same way that there she might end up in the most intense general residential and next door it might be the least intense medium density residential. And they might be more similar than we are currently imagining. So it's possible there will be, there'll be some changes just done through the mapping. But then even within those, we're districts, but along the district boundary line, I would expect those tools that you were mentioning, set additional setback, step back and those tools that you were mentioning, set additional setback, step back and other tools like that that allowed you to create a more respectful height uh transition um would be employed.
So I I must have been a very early draft or perhaps even part of the Affordable Housing Plan. It was someplace I've been reading and uh a product from the consultants in general uh was was suggesting that a lot of those setback lot size requirements were gonna get sort of pushed away in the interest of increasing density. I take it from what you put out this time. This is the first time that I can remember having seen something from you all that explicitly acknowledges that those kinds of tools will still be there. Is that something we can reassure people? Yes, we're still going to be able to use those kinds of tools.
The only tool that we are talking about eliminating is the direct relationship of density to, you know, number of units to land area. That's the only tool that we are, we are not using in this discussion. But yes, we would fully anticipate using tools. Um, whether we use floor area in places that it's not used today is an open question, but certainly in in the massing of bulkier buildings uh using floor area restrictions is very commonplace. We'll be using height, we'll be using step backs, we'll be using articulation, we'll be using sort of everything in the toolkit that we think is reasonable. Um, but we will be looking also to make sure that we can meet our obligations in terms of of trying to get enough units on the site. So there there will still be some tension, but we'll make certain that people have have drawings and examples that they can look at so that we can understand how to balance those before we adopt the zoning.
Okay. One of the other questions I I had was about the, I I wrote down the phrase approval option for specific sites well suited for affordable two over two townhouses. We've gotten a couple of emails in the last couple of days that puzzled me because they seem to make it sound as though two over two townhouses was the end of Western civilization as we know it. Um, but what what does it mean to be a lot that is well suited for an affordable two over two townhouse?
One that slopes away from the street.
Okay.
So that we can have a walkout floor out the backside that in essence sits mostly, you know, below ground from the street, so that the perceived height from the street is less than the full four bar, the full two and two.
Okay. Um. The only other just simple point that I would make when you're talking about subdivisions, um at some level, you being able to subdivide property becomes a tool for more density. I understand it might also under some of these uh regimens become a tool for frustrating the ability to make density be affordable. I note that an awful lot of the R one zones in Charlottesville have a no subdivision restrictive covenant. And that may be one more thing that we're gonna run into as we try to just see what it really means in practice. So, thank you. Back to you.
I guess I'll go. Um, a lot of a lot of ground has already been covered. Um, but I would echo just both I I have concerns just about making sure that we are doing all we can to protect those sensitive areas. However, we are gonna final, you know, be finally defining them. Um, and I I do continue to have a concern around the impacts of the Airbnb because right now we're a community that doesn't enforce Airbnbs that are even illegal. And I mean, this is a city we have to own that and that is something that does take staff resources to do, but we're almost setting up a situation where we'll be inviting some of that behavior because people will be living on their property and there will be other units from which that they rent. And um I just really hope that we can explore ways that we can minimize that because I think that we already have a lot of habit housing stock that's not being utilized effectively because of of those types of dynamics. And I'm just fearful of that happening um across the city. Um, I also think that I'm also in favor of us just exploring ways that we can expand or that incentive to build that affordable unit more on the forefront so that we do have um a greater um range of affordability throughout the city and not just in in some of these areas that are being even, you know, more encouraged in the sensitive areas where I think things are largely affordable. How do we incentivize that in a way? But I also understand, you know, there are some dynamics at play in terms of the dollars incentive that will actually happen. Um, but I I am interested in making just making sure that we have explored that thoroughly. I do share kind of the puzzling of just some of the choices for where medium intensity occurs. And I but I think that if we are looking at more general residential wide allowing with additional affordability that that done additional density, then I think that I almost ask myself, do we even need the medium intensity? Because are we almost accomplishing that more citywide? But regardless, I can see, I can see where in some of these corridors it can be, but I'll I'll pull up different examples. Birdwood Court um is another one to me that um, I mean, right now just getting in and out of that is near impossible. I I don't and also just the 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 price points of those units. I think my fear would just be our, just like as Rory mentioned over in Riverside. I I I'm still not clear on like, to me, that's a sensitive area of the Riverside Avenue. I mean, those are affordable units. I can see that being right for someone just to go ahead and and basically start over and um really impact, you know, the the residents that are there and the affordability that's there. And you also mentioned just the public housing component. And so um as much as I can see, there's opportunities for for density. Um, I I I also was scratching my head at just some of these dead end spots where there really isn't a natural kind of exit point. Um, in addition to there being a lot of affordable, um more affordable units in those areas. And I would say that Westwood Road and Westwood Circle um offset from rugby was another one, but there's multiple. And so I just, I guess I'm still still not clear on what what was really driving the decision making for medium density, either in the spring version or even in this version when things things have been adjusted. Um, just because it it just hasn't made full sense um to me. Um. I think that's it for now. I I also agree with Rory's point, though, about um our biggest opportunity areas in some of these commercial and mixed use areas where these group, these, you know, grayfields are. And um I just, I mean, X property is a perfect example of something we've obviously been talking about for many, many years as a community. Um. The amount, what we can do in a site like that to really put, you know, a dent in some of these um, these needs. I just think that we we really should be putting a lot more focus on that. And I I agree with the point made that it does then allow for the our general residential areas to not be feeling that the heat is intensely if we take advantage of 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 those spaces. So I appreciate those comments from the commissioner.
Ellen, um, questions I had have already been asked, but I guess I'll just reiterate. I know some of these have been addressed. Um, but again, the question around um subdivisions and just ensuring that that is taken care of um during the zoning rewrite process and has worked out. Um, likewise, if there are still opportunities to expand the approach used um and what you've defined as the sensitive areas to other neighborhoods throughout the city in order to expand where there are incentives to build affordable housing citywide and also addressing, you know, some of the concerns that, you know, I think there are still some neighborhoods that you haven't defined as sensitive neighborhoods that will be at risk of displacement and gentrification. Um, particularly if there are a high percentage of renters in those neighborhoods, I think there will be an even greater risk. Um, if the approach isn't expanded throughout more of the city, whether that be through inclusionary zoning or um, the and affordable housing overlay to accomplish that. Um, but I guess those are just thoughts I have right now.
Sorry, can I can I ask one clarifying question about those comments?
Definitely.
Okay, um, thanks. So um in term and I I'd welcome input from others who have also mentioned this, but when we're talking about um, I've heard some comments about expanding the sensitive uh community area concept to other parts of the city. And I think there's sort of two pieces of that. So I want to make sure I understand the intent behind those those comments. Um, and I'm sorry I didn't mention this earlier, just came to mind. Uh, but I think, you know, there is the sort of incentivizing keeping the existing structure. Uh, which I think I heard at least um one one individual say, you know, potentially adding that to general residential to allow up to, for example, four units, I think, in the base is what maybe I was hearing if the existing structure is maintained. Um. And then the other piece of the sensitive community area would be uh having the first unit be affordable um as a requirement before additional units um can be built. So those are sort of two separate things. So I guess, Michael, uh, maybe because we're with you and see what your thought is, but I'd I'd welcome input from others who have mentioned the expansion of the sensitive area concept.
Um, well, I mean, my thought would be um if there's utility in exploring, expanding both those approaches to more areas throughout the city.
Okay, thanks.
If I could jump in, because I think you might have been talking about me mentioning that. Um, I think where I stand on that is that um, we know that a single family detached house uh has a premium over uh stay each unit in a duplex, for example. Um, and we know that because in many areas of the city uh that are these kind of high income areas, places like Lewis Mountain, we have a lot of nonconformant or a number of nonconforming duplexes. And over time, they've been deconverted um and and they've knocked down that party wall and they've become a single family house. Um, so to me, it's important that, or the approach I think we should take is that outside of the sensitive areas, um, we want to allow a base level of density that at the very least competes uh with that single family detached house. Um, so that we're not putting our thumb on the scale to make sure the detached house wins. Um, and then only beyond that point, um where where the rental units or the Plex uh already pencils or comes close to competing, that is where you can start to apply that affordability bonus um and and extract that that extra value creating because below that point, you're not creating enough value to even get beyond uh the single family detached house. And and if we create a scheme where there is no incentive to not do a single family detached house, then we've kind of patted ourselves on the back for overturning the, you know, legacy of single family zoning. Uh, but in reality, we create an outcome where single family zoning is what we get.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
And I just have a couple um comments. Um, one, I just would like for us to keep in mind when we're talking about the walkability, bikeability, that those look very different. Um, based on um who you are and how much time you have. So just when those comments are made, I hope you all can keep that in mind. And then the co- um comments surrounding like concentrating on um land like the X park versus um some of the, you know, neighborhoods. That doesn't really um work. When I hear that, what I see is that um you're talking about available land in the city that's privately owned, so that owner will be able to do um what they choose to. But you're also talking about areas that have been predominantly black and low income and the continual um gentrification and possible displacements of families who live um in those areas. And what's already happening in that area? Um, when we're talking about, you know, these changes are potentially prioritizing that. Um, that's what I hear, not that families will be served more, that we could utilize that space to build um lower AMI. I hear that you are potentially furthering um the displacements that's already happening in that area um for families. And so I know those things will be able to be monitored based on the zoning um changes that happen, you know, and the, you know, what the city um staff and what legal are able to um and the housing division able to enforce. But I just think we have to be very mindful about um about what it may mean.
Uh, um, Mr. Chair.
Please.
I am, I I want to drill down on that a little bit more because I'm not understanding exactly what the mayor is suggesting. Um, can you be, can you be more specific about this?
Yeah, so there were um, there was a comment made just a um I think Counselor Hill was um and Roy maybe had talked about it before, but um they were talking about some of the um concerns with the neighborhoods and looking at properties like the X park and being able to utilize those properties, then maybe spreading um the developments throughout neighborhoods. And so my comment is just to be mindful, if you're talking about the X park, what you have at the X park is you have a Crescent Halls on one side, Sixth Street on the other side, Friendship Court on the other. Um, and thinking about building or utilizing that space um that is mostly concrete, a few buildings was the comments that I heard at that time. And being able to possibly um build some of the housing that we need um for to meet the um housing shortages that we have and concentrating on lower income um or lower AMIs at that point. I'm just asking us to be mindful about what that means for that area. Um, and what it mean, one, we don't own it. But um, and so that is um a key too. But look at what's already happening on that property and what new buildings are who it's likely to cater to. And you're talking about one of um uh a piece of land that's surrounded by three low income areas. Um, and some of the lowest income housing in the area. So while it may seem like a good idea, I'm just asking us to just think about that, especially with whatever. If that's the route we decide to go, whatever those zoning changes, when we get to the zoning um, the code to change that would make sure what we desire to happen there actually happen and not that we allow someone to build with the intention of those things benefiting the community um in the way that we're talking about here, but it not actually occurring.
Got it. So I think with the mirror, I think, and please, Mary, if if I misinterpret you, you just ask us to be mindful of what we're doing with this that is our district and and make sure that we uh protect the low income community in that in that in that district. Is that?
Yeah, I'm saying, don't give the ability for the X um property to have um some of the increased density that we're talking about throughout the area, then don't have a way to enforce it. But then that further gentrifies the community versus leading to the changes and the desired outcome that we are hoping for.
I think I understand. Mr. Chair, I think I understand.
If I could ask, Mayor Walker, do you see that as kind of being like X specific uh or or generally applying to kind of all of the big like commercial sites like the scrapyard and like twenty nine?
Well, it X was the development that came up, um which is when I, you know, thought to, you know, share this comment. But I, at this point, I'm talking about that property because and I'm basing on what has happened historically in Charlottesville. Like, we haven't been able to force, um, you know, if you ask what are, where is the affordable housing that we paid for? That um we have allowed SUPs for, we can't tell you where that is at right now. So if we are moving, if um citizens have called in and have said, I don't want these huge developments near my property. And then part of the conversation is shifting to maybe these type of um vacant or, you know, lots that are buildable can help meet some of this demand. If that is the shift that we move towards for that, I'm just asking us to pay attention to what is happening in the neighborhood. And in this particular case, I wanted us to make sure that we understood that there are three low income properties um that are on three different sides of this building, you know, of this land. Um, and for us to be able to ensure that if we're saying we're not going to spread these units potentially throughout the city the way we had planned for earlier on, that we are then and that we may concentrate a little bit more here, that it actually benefits the people that we are talking about. I still think that we need to um continue. If people want to live in different areas in the city, I have some other thoughts about um whether, you know, they will feel welcome in those areas and whether they will be able to create community in those areas. But that's a separate topic. Um, but I'm talking about some of the changes that I have um listened to over time as people um call in and say that they don't necessarily agree with um from the high intensity to medium density, like those discussions. And then if we switch to saying, oh, where are the vacant spaces? Where are the spaces that we can build that we don't have a lot of control over? Um, but the zoning um changes will have more control. I just think that uh we need to be mindful about um be honest about how much control we actually have there and just make sure that what we intend to happen um in an area that has been predominantly um black and low income that is changing rapidly, that we don't make decisions that um don't do what we are saying that we desire to do.
I would use the, as one of many examples of just areas of opportunity for development that are just highly undeveloped. I think there's many, but I also thought I made the point that we have to do all of these things. We have to, like I said, also, we have to encourage there to be more affordability throughout the city. We need to have a range of incomes throughout the city and every neighborhood. But I don't think that any one of these things is going to do it on its own. And I think so much of the conversation has been around residential. And I was just trying to highlight the point that there's a whole another aspect around this beyond general residential that could provide a lot of units for this community and meet some of those demands.
Thank you. I think we can do another round of planning commissioner, talk with, where, if you're up for it. Mr. Mitchell, do you have anything to give like that?
Oh, no, I always reiterate the need to be more implicit about the overlay.
Thank you, Mr. Bob.
Nothing extra. I do want to say that I appreciate all the language again on multiple different issues, including the JPA area and just highlighting all the different areas we need to take a closer glance at. I wonder if there are ways to put protections against demolishing the affordable, you know, affordable housing that exists to create market rate housing, such as the example that Review Park that Counselor Wood mentioned. And I don't know how this one shakes out. I think everybody kind of touched on this, the expansion of the sensitive, the general residential sensitive area to other general residential areas. And maybe it comes out to like four units, maybe the second unit is the one that's required to be affordable, not the first. And what is, I guess we need the four units for the accessibility factor. But then like, how far do we give by right that somebody wouldn't ever go for that affordability bonus that we're providing? So I don't know what that balance would be, but just wanted to bring that up. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew.
Commissioner Mitchell had his hand.
Mr. Mitchell had his hand up, I think he would.
I was reminded by the public that I, I misused the word implicit. And I mean explicit, we, the overlay needs to be in the thing. So thank you. I think it was Flip or somebody, thank you for saying, I said implicit, I mean explicit. The overlay gets to be in the, in the day, don't they?
Mr. Andrew, please.
And thank you, y'all. Loud, yeah, I did not ask all that I, or made the comments I wanted to the first time. So thank you for this opportunity. I, like others, am having a great deal of difficulty with the medium intensity residential designation and the way it is currently crafted. I, and I understand the, the intent, which is to start increasing the density along these opportu, in these opportunistic areas. But I worry that the, it's too much too quickly. I, I do not see that a 12 unit multiplex building is quote unquote house sized. And to start plopping six to 12 unit multiplex buildings in the midst of what is currently detached, single family housing on areas like Grove Avenue and Elliot and Riverside, well, not Riverside, but Evergreen. That just, just does not say to me, good land use practice. That's creating conflict. I'm looking to have an incremental, I would prefer to have an incremental increase that allows these differences to coexist comfortably and not compete and not to be in conflict. And that's why I would, I would certainly like to see 12 units cut back drastically as the, 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 the top end for what's allowed. And, and I know that all the, all the details, the devil in the details, and that's going to happen during the zoning rewrite. I also know that I'm not going to be here. I'm going to be rotating off by the time that gets done. So I sure want to at least put a bug in everyone else's ear that I worry about the unintended consequences of changing things too fast. I will, will keep pushing for incremental change and, and, and let's see how that does. Thank you.
Can I respond to one aspect of that? Is that allowed, Chair?
Please.
Thank you. So thank you, Jordy. Just the one thing I want to speak to is the size of what we're imagining. And I, I would welcome Ron or Lee to, to comment on this too. We keep saying the term house size, which I know we've talked about a bit tonight, contextual based on sort of what a house means in a certain area. When we talk about multiplexes getting, you know, eight, 12, et cetera, we're envisioning that there would be potentially multiple buildings that would be house sized. In, in many cases, not necessarily a large 12 unit. If we, if we're talking about a 12 unit, 12, 12 residential units on a property, we would imagine potentially that would be, for example, two, two, six unit developments. And in many cases, not, may perhaps not explicitly or only, but that we would encourage that type of scale. I guess, Ron, is that accurate with your understanding as well?
Yes, I mean, that's exactly what we've been talking about with house scale. We don't want a 12plex development plot in the middle of a, of a, a single family neighborhood. It's not our mission and that's not what we want to do. We want to make sure that these infield development types are of that scale and variety, meeting those height restrictions and meeting the envelope sizes for kind of that contextual residential scale for each of these neighborhood areas. So I think that's a good clarification.
I'm glad to hear that. I was just put led astray by one of your illustrations that is in your presentation that shows a huge 12 unit apartment building that it looks like a, you know, a residence on steroids. It's, it's no residence sized building.
Are you talking within the medium intensity residential slide? I think potentially you may be looking at that lower, lower left side. Thank you, Joe. You know, I think, Ron, please correct me. I don't believe there are 12 unit buildings shown on here. So I just wanted to clarify. We may be making a difference.
No, there aren't any 12 unit buildings shown here at all. I think the building on the lower left is maybe eight. Those are two over two. So you see four doors right there in the foreground. There's another set of four doors down the left. That's a two over two. And we've been describing those to be developed at appropriate locations. They wouldn't also have to be two in a row like that. That's just the precedent image of what that could look like. So, you know, we're certainly through our zoning standards will limit how that type of development would be occurring and where it occurs. I think that's something we kind of touched on through the presentation. But yes, that would.
The top right one, that looks, that's very large. And I, and, and, okay, well, that, that seems a very large unit and I, and I'm imagining it going on ways in the back too. And so I just just wanted to express that concern that, that, that with single family residences on both sides would be out of place.
Thank you. Ms. Russell, comments and questions?
Um, nothing additional, really. I I'm not, I'm not sure whether we need an overlay or a bonus baked in. And I'm just, you know, want to know what gives more clear, deliberate intentionality towards affordability. And I look forward to what you all come back with on that. Thanks.
Mr. Stoltenberg, questions and comments?
Yeah, I mean, I guess first I, I'd push back on the idea that a slightly larger plex than the immediately adjacent homes is necessarily out of place or doesn't belong. I sent you guys 12 plex up in, I think Silver Spring last month. As you can see, it's essentially indistinguishable from a single family house from the street. But it does indeed go back a little ways into the backyard. I, I don't think that's something that we should be afraid of. You know, with the caveat that we will have setbacks, we will have, you know, site plan restrictions that make sure that roads can handle the traffic and, and whatnot, right? Like the idea that kind of everything has its place and needs to be sorted into that place is, I think fundamentally a product of our, of our current land use regime. And I think it's produced some really bad outcomes. And I mean, to that point, the, this idea of corridors and commercial areas as an exclusive strategy, that very much is our existing land use paradigm dating back to at least the 2001 corridor study, right? And we can see that it has really failed to produce good outcomes. In many cases, it's failed to produce any help at all or any change, maybe because their restrictions are too strict or because there's really more demand for neighborhood living, whether it be small rentals or denser, you know, detached or attached, single family homes as we see in most of the PDs that come forward. And I, I think it would be a big mistake to really double down on that and to say that everything belongs on corridors and we don't want any change in our neighborhoods. I think change in every part of the city is a part of the natural way that cities evolve over time. And we've wrapped it down those restrictions and in so doing, we've forced sprawl. And I think it's a real mistake to rely on corridors as the only place where people can live. We know that vehicular corridors are associated with higher rates of asthma and respiratory illnesses, especially in children. And I, I think it's important that, to make some room in our neighborhoods. And I think, I think people in our neighborhoods are to a large extent amenable to that, especially where we can do it with minimal impacts. And no, no, like aesthetics is not a dirty word. And we can, we can do this in a way that embraces aesthetics, but we can't do this in a way that forces everything to be exactly like it always has been. And I guess that's what I have to say about that. The only other minor point I'd make, I mean, again, I think in some of those lower parts of downtown, there's room for that medium intensity, like on Second Street Northeast. For Barracks Road, and I mean, this is kind of just a general thought about where we're making large investments in infrastructure. We have an eight figure investment in a shared use path along Barracks Road that will connect to another shared use path along Emmett Street that will bring people to both our major vehicular oriented commercial corridor and to our largest employer in town. That charity path ends east of Buckingham Road. So to me, the west side of Barracks along there, where we have some very large properties that can definitely be subdivided if the property owner is so desired, I would be, I think, a very reasonable place for additional density, especially given their proximity to that commercial corridor, which we're, I guess, sort of pretending is, is going to be walkable. And I mean, I've walked there, it's doable, it's just a little bit hostile. But maybe with more pedestrians, it'll become less so. And with these new investments, we're making less so. And the flip side of that is on the east side of Barracks Road, we have high intensity in places like Hemlock Lane that are like, you know, are kind of affordable, single family detached housing stock. And I feel like in general, from the, up to the August draft, we moved a lot of the density from wealthy areas that complained, were very outspoken in opposition to change and move them towards less wealthy areas. That wasn't actually one that changed, but I think it's one that I think is maybe a questionable decision. And I, I would like to see us undo some of those changes because honestly, I've, I've seen people out in the wild saying, hey, these guys got their way just by being really loud and complaining about it a lot. I don't think that's a reasonable way to make land use policy.
And thank you. I have a couple of questions. Just broadly, you talked briefly about the, the purpose of the medium intensity and then sort of the concept of missing middle and, and why it's here. And also, could you talk about lower income, fixed income, long-term residents? You know, having some difficulty paying their taxes. Do they have a part of this story? Is this, is this a plan for them or is this a plan that forgets them?
Thanks, Lyle. So this is a plan that is for everyone. The land use map, the land use plan, the future land use vision we've described, and we've talked about a lot tonight, itself, as I mentioned, is not necessarily going to provide affordability at a level that meets everyone's needs. So when you, when you talk about the lowest, sort of lowest income sort of neighbors and lowest, lowest wealth communities, there, there are several strategies in the affordable housing plan recommendations, I guess I would call them, that we've that are included in this comprehensive plan process that will, that can be used, that should be used paired with these land use strategies to support affordability at all levels in the city, both for homeownership where possible, as well as for, for renter, renter units. And so I would just reiterate that the land use map itself potentially cannot provide all the needs or address all the needs for those that you've described. But paired with the strategies in the affordable housing plan, we do think it can do that. And it will do that if implemented in the way it's described.
Medium residential, we're hearing a lot about it. Is it worth it? Do we want to keep it? Why do we want to keep it?
The reason we've, we've shown the medium intensity residential, I know this is a broken record to some, but I'm happy to reiterate. We the, one of the reasons is that we are looking at supporting transit, walkability, bikeability. Although I want to mention, I really appreciate the mayor's point earlier that the not everyone can, you know, walk to work or for various reasons. Not everyone can take transit to work for various reasons. And so we're not looking to say this is all that should be supported. But by focusing some, some of the middle, medium intensity residential along these corridors, we would look to support those enhancements, you know, to support transit, walkability, bikeability. You know, looking for ways to support affordability along transit is something that's baked in now to the, the statewide comprehensive plan process. We're looking at transit oriented development, in this case, bus oriented, which goes not only for medium intensity residential, but also the other mixed use corridors at various scales. We're also, you know, looking outside of just those corridors for medium intensity residential. We're, we're looking at parks and schools and other places we've heard are really important to the community to have access to. And so we've, we've included these medium intensity residential zones to try, try and focus some of that, that scale of development that would in this case, you know, as we've discussed, the the market rate number of units versus what is bonus might be something that we look at in the zoning ordinance. But for now, we are proposing a higher amount of market rate would be allowed at these, along these corridors or other, wherever medium intensity is, but it would still have a really significant affordable component. So to the point of, is it worth it? We think it's good planning to, to look at this type of outlining these type of areas to, to, for the support investments that would really support people living here and having a livable community. And again, just read it, iterate, not, not everything is being envisioned to have up to the maximum number of units. It would like to be some, some range in there. Ron, did you have anything you'd want to add to that?
No, I think that's, that's well covered and hit on all the points that we've been talking about for medium intensity residential.
So I respond to your question then, Lyle.
I think that helps. Counselor Hill, does that, does that hit you, hit you correctly? You didn't get a response. I was concerned about that.
Well, thank you. I'm, I'm fine. Thanks.
Well, thank you. I'm fine. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you for checking.
Sort of last call on Commissioner and Counselor comments or otherwise I'd like to take a short break and then go to public comment.
I could ask one question that
Please.
I must have asked it and thought I had an answer to it a long time ago, but I am now confused. Explain to me, please, what the, how one measures two and a half stories, three and a half stories? What are we measuring when we do that? How do you get a half a story? What kinds of things give a half a story?
Pitch roof or a half of the floor covered on a flat roof building.
How about a basement that's partly above ground?
Right now, well, it depends on how we end up measuring height. So we haven't come to any closure on that. So there are two fundamental ways to measure height. Many communities measure height only from the street-facing side because that's the public realm, but that can lead to several more stories on the backside if your lot falls off. And if you're on the other side from that person, you may not be happy about looking up at a five-story building that's, you know, a two-and-a-half-story building at the street above. So we haven't reached any closure on that, but often we would have height follow the slope at least somewhat, height in segments as it steps down the slope. And, and the, the half-story is really exactly that. It's either a half-story because it has a pitched roof and therefore it has half the floor area or because it is a flat roof and it literally has half the floor area, covers half of the floor below it.
Does it matter how pitched the roof is?
Yes, there would typically be a range. And on the flat roof, there would be a location for where the, the open portion is, meaning if we want that to appear to be shorter from the street, then, then that additional piece would have to be to the rear. They could do an outdoor deck or something on the front side, but, but it would be to the rear.
Is it fair to say that this is one of those things where we're going to have to draft the zoning ordinance before we see exactly what we're thinking about?
We'll, we'll have to model it for people so that they can understand it, yes. And, and as Jenny said earlier, we are, in this particular instance, leaving a lot of challenging questions to the zoning ordinance. It will work out a lot of these details, whether to people's satisfaction or not. It is an open question at this point in time, but it will offer up, you know, express answers for these details on a lot-by-lot basis. If we can come to agreement then on the zoning ordinance and its map, we can reach back to the future land use map. I do believe that it would be an excellent idea to make conforming revisions to the land use map and the description of the, of the districts at the time we have finally made all of those zoning decisions so that the two are in close alignment. Otherwise, they'll be used against you in the future to modify zoning, you know, again. So I, I do expect Councilor that, that there, there will be, there'll be a step for that.
So we would expect that once we've finished with all of these things, there may be some coming back and tweaking on the land use map?
In my mind, yes, both the aerial extent and the descriptions.
That's what I've been telling people was going to happen, but I'm glad to hear somebody actually say it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
You're muted.
Sorry, can you unmute me there?
Sorry, so used to that, you know, mute because I'm, so I'm, I'm not totally comfortable. I got answered to the overlay, the, the formidable overlay. So I just want the consultants, like, work a little harder on that. And the recommendation from so many people that we've talked to is like, to have a community-wide overlay. So I'd ask for that.
Yeah, I, I mean, fundamentally, there isn't any reason to make it an overlay unless, I mean, you get, if you get the exact same outcome, the same package of rules will apply to the site, whether we put all the rules in the base district or whether we put them in an overlay. We get no additional authority, we get no, so, I mean, if it's optics that we're talking about here, I fully understand that, but I'd like to start out thinking that people could look at it in the districts and see that those rules are there and apply everywhere. And, and, and a different set of districts apply to the sensitive areas and we've achieved their ends. That's my hope. It will look simpler five years from now than an overlay would.
The optics are not important to me. The result is, that's what's important to me. And I want to make sure that the, the overlay expands beyond the sensitive areas because I don't want to, again, concentrate photo housing in the sensitive areas. I want to expand a portable housing into the wealthier areas as well. So that's my, my point.
Can I respond to that quickly? So just to note, so we, we are talking about a, a bonus system for, for affordable units outside of sensitive areas. So that is how we are looking to apply this, this overlay, this overlay concept outside. So I understand, it might, I think it potentially gets a bit lost because we're not putting out a specific number, as we discussed with, I think, Mr. Stolzenberg or someone else earlier.
And Ron did a pretty good job of walking us through that. We just need to make sure we sell the, make, make sure the public understands that while we are not being very explicit about the overlay, that we know that the overlay is important and we're going to make it happen. So we just need to make sure the public understands that the overlay is going to happen.
If, if it would make you more comfortable at the time of writing the land use plan right now to describe it as an overlay or similar zoning measure or some language like that, I, you know, we could work within that and still build it as base districts. I, I, I would rather not be absolutely told that an overlay is the best model because here's what will happen. And this is just, it seems like a simple thing to me because I look at this stuff all the time. But, but here's what will happen. You will look at your base district, you know, general residential one, or whatever we end up calling it, right? You'll look at your base district and it won't really say anything about the affordable housing because the affordable housing is 20 pages further or 50 pages further or 100 pages further down in the ordinance in the affordable housing overlay. And yes, that will apply to everybody on the map and it will have the same meaning, but we'll have two pieces. We'll have a piece here that says, here's your base district rights and here's your rights when you do the affordable housing bonus. And we would prefer that when someone looks at the metrics for what they can do on their site, they see all those pieces together. And that's why I personally would prefer and feel it will be more legible if we build it into the base district because it will be literally on the same pages with the other material. We can always point to the material, we can do lots of kinds of things if it's in two different places. But fundamentally, if it operates as an overlay, it will be in one place in the ordinance and the base district will be in another.
Got it. I'm seeing you. I totally, yeah, got it. I'm staying. End of the day, we're on the same page. Bottom line is more for both of us, so yes.
Thank you. I, I don't, I don't mind leaving the language about the overlay if we feel it's necessary at this stage. It is, it's fine to continue talking about it as a layer, you know, beyond, you know, that applies to bonus system. It's fine talking about it that way. I don't, I'm not saying we should, you know, wipe that off the map necessarily.
As long as it lives or breathes in the underlying document, then it's cool.
Ms. Russell?
I think there's something in the wording of a bonus seeming like, oh, you know, it'd be nice versus an overlay implying it floats over everything. So, so maybe just something in the terminology being strengthened, but I, I take your recommendation seriously and, you know, you guys are the experts. So, but, but maybe there's something to what we're calling it.
Yeah, Commissioner Russell, I think we're down to the nomenclature. We, we, and yeah, yeah, what we call it, I think we're pretty much on the same page. We're working through the nomenclature now.
We, we can, we can see whether we can, we, we can talk internally about whether there are better words for what we're trying to do. And as long as we don't get astray of Ms. Robertson, we'd be, we'll be fine. So I'm, I'm happy to, to talk through the language of the plan. As I say, it can be a little bit different than the language of, of the zoning we are headed for. So maybe there's a happy medium in here somewhere.
Counselor Hill, please.
I certainly understand the logic of having all the information in one place. I guess where I'm still confused is because we haven't defined what this overlay is for general residential and how many it is, but what is that compared to transitioning to this medium? Because right now, they're just kind of, kind of intermingling with me because we have this additional thing we're talking about with general residential. Whereas I think in my comments I was sharing, I think that we should almost get to that, you know, some of the stuff in that medium intensity, allow it everywhere. But I think that's kind of what you're saying at the same time. I'm just having trouble with that jump from this bonus piece for the general residential and then what that means for medium. And does medium also have a, a bonus piece? And this, for some reason, I'm just having trouble with that transition and how different those things are. I'm not sure if I'm the only one, but.
No, that's, that's a great question. So we, we anticipate that the inclusionary requirements will certainly apply in, you know, full-on, higher-intensity apartment living kinds of settings in mixed-use buildings in which apartments might be built above, you know, commercial or other kinds of activity. In those settings, we are anticipating that, that we'll use our, our new inclusionary powers to get at many of the same results that we're talking about, providing it a bonus option for. And that is all we have right now. We, we are, we are constraining people from being able to do certain kinds of things until they accept the bonus option. But they can still build, you know, one house and be done with it. All, all of those things are still possible. We, we are not necessarily talking about being able to take that full-on inclusionary toolkit all the way down to the lowest end of the spectrum. But we don't really know, that, that's why Phil is listening to these conversations. He's going to be working with us to try to make certain that we, we get a toolkit that makes sense. But we're anticipating that any, apologize, that's my COVID puppy in the background. Every, every piece of property in the city that's producing new residential units will have a way to generate affordable units on. It may not have a mandate, but it will have a bonus option that will be appealing if it doesn't have a mandate.
Obviously, like, there's a lot of conversation around how much is yet to kind of really be figured out through this zoning. And we understand that. I think for, for me, it's really important. I think that we kind of set the, set the table so that it's, it's a little more fluided and a little, you know, for, for you all to do this next piece of work. But can we just talk a tiny bit about that process? Because I think a lot of residents, a lot of folks here are just kind of wondering like, what does that look like? And it is done at a parcel-by-parcel basis. I'm assuming that the team actually is physically out into the community and seeing the constraints of those parcels. If you don't mind, I just think it would really be helpful, especially given that we're going to be going into public comment. There's just a lot of questions around this process.
So as, as we craft kind of conceptual ideas for districts, we'll be testing those and we'll be testing those on a variety of kinds of sites. The first and simplest is we'll test them on, you know, flat level sites without a bunch of trees, for example. And, and in the end, when we think we're narrowing in on things, we're going to have to test things on sloped sites. We're going to have to test how things work on sites with trees. You know, do we have adequate flexibility to preserve the trees on the site? So it, the modeling will get a little more complex. We'll model it again at the start as just kind of bulk and mass, you know, really simple 3D models. And then again, as we move closer to the ordinance, the models will get more details. They'll get to the point where even Jody perhaps will be happier with the outcomes because he's actually, you know, seeing some of the requirements being applied to a building and, and can understand the outcomes better. So, so it's a little bit iterative and, and that's just, that's our part of looking at the visual portion of the discussion. Then HRNA's portion of the discussion is to look at the, at the financial portion of the discussion and help us understand that and make certain that we don't do something that so warps the marketplace that we cannot achieve the outcomes that we're trying to achieve. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
And so Lee, just to follow up, you mentioned just natural characteristics of the site. I'm presuming you're also looking at the man-made characteristics in the context of that site, too.
If you're thinking of the cultural ones, yes. Did you have something else in mind?
No, no, just those.
That's sort of what I thought, yes.
That you weren't ignoring what was built around it.
Yes, we'll definitely be looking at the surrounding context and we'll be looking at, at the, the questions of, of the gateway corridors and the historic districts as well. So that, because one size will not fit all. There's a certain width of lot where you can get a driveway past a house. There's a, you know, a different width of lot where you can put a two-car garage on a house that might be, you know, might be acceptable facing the street. Those are all, you know, kind of different things that we'll have to talk through.
Setback, setbacks are different in different neighborhoods. Yes, okay.
Excellent. I believe we are at a place where we can take a five-minute break and then I'd like to say something and then public comment. See you in five minutes. Thank you. See you in five minutes. Thank you. And I believe we are back. I'd like to read a, a short statement to help guide the, the, uh, conversation. I hope it's of value. As we have throughout this planning process, we welcome comments and questions and we commit on our side to listening carefully and thoughtfully to what we hear. In recognition of the great number of people who would like to speak and are limited time together, I offer two requests. Uh, first, everyone will have two minutes to speak. However, I encourage everyone to be concise, use less time. And if someone has previously raised your comment or question, please don't repeat it, but instead note that you agree with the previous statement. Second, the commission will disregard personal or professional comments against our members, staff, consultants or fellow speakers. Please focus your comments and questions on the substance of the plan. That is what we are here for and we expect and welcome different points of view. But for this discussion space to work, we must be respectful of each other. Uh, who is our first speaker, please?
Thank you, Chair. And our first speaker is Ted Pearson, followed by John Thompson. Ted, you're all with the planning commission. You have two minutes.
You'd, thank you. Thank you for having me. I think what I've heard, everyone agrees that the zoning changes will increase density, but that's not a guarantee that you will guarantee affordable housing being built. And the developers still have the ability to build by right. So hopefully the, the there's no guarantee that they will build affordable housing. In fact, the housing recently built in Charlottesville, they've all paid fines to, uh, the fund, affordable housing fund. And all the, the housing that's going to be built, does, does the city have to pay for all the infrastructure? That may end resulting of all this building? And I saw a map that says the city already has 600 units under consideration for planning. And I don't know if any of those are designated to be affordable units. So I feel like the existing neighborhoods, they could potentially be altered and disrupt, you know, completely disrupted. And I understand with the school changes that's going to be occurring, that property taxes will be increased. Substantially. So I wonder what this plan is going to do for our property taxes in the future, unless you hold developers accountable for all the changes and the units they want to build. So thank you.
Thank you. And next?
Next, we have John Thompson, followed by Tim Giles. John, you're all with the planning commission. You have two minutes.
Please unmute.
Huh? Okay, yeah, got it. Thanks. Yeah, we sent you a petition, uh, signed by 40 homeowners asking that Grove Road be reduced on the map from medium intensity to general residential. And we weren't asking for no upzoning, just for a zoning like the other streets in the neighborhood. We sent in lots of follow up emails and Mr. Soli Yates replied to those emails. So that gave us the impression that our opinions mattered and yet the petition was denied. So I can only conclude that you all have decided to reconfigure the city in a very undemocratic way. You clearly don't think that neighborhoods should have any say in how they're zoned. So my question today is, why are you having public comment at this meeting since you've already decided what you're going to do? But even though you might not be paying attention, I'm still going to say you're making arbitrary decisions. Upper Grove is narrower than Yorktown, for instance. Yet you've designated Grove medium intensity in Yorktown, general residential. You're using doublespeak. You're saying that rezoning will make, this rezoning will make the city more walkable, bikeable and green, and it does the opposite. So you're asking developers to come in, clear out 100 year old trees, pave yards for parking, add traffic noise and construction. And as Mr. Mitchell just pointed out, there's a danger of just adding luxury condos instead of affordable units. So please keep in mind that instead of coming up with something original, you're relying on a shock born theory that is, this is a theory of density that has never worked anywhere. All right, that's it.
And thank you. Next, please.
Next is Tim Giles, followed by William McChesney. Tim, you're all in the planning commission. You have two minutes.
All right, can you hear me? Very good. Um, thank you for having me on. Uh, I'd like to mention that general residential, um, I would like to see that go up to 3.5 stories, make that quick. A lot of the general residential homes, uh, that I've seen are already three stories, three plus stories. So knocking it back down to 2.5 would make new housing, um, hard to do. And we only have limited land. Let's take advantage of the land that we have built, built up and not out. Um, because we're in a housing crisis, we need to do something about it. Um, additionally, I would like to see language that specifically set that allows triplexes, townhouses, row houses in general residential and be 100% clear about that. That is something that we want to aim for, for having attached housing, which, uh, again, since it uses, has better use of land, more likely than not would be more affordable and allow other alternative, uh, ways of homeownership other than just detached, single family housing. And I want to, uh, say thank you for looking into the JPA, uh, language and allowing like in certain locations that to have a higher building height and to encourage density in places where it totally makes sense and it would give benefit to that area and allow, um, more people to have a place to live and stay, which is a very important to me. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Next, please.
Next is William McChesney, followed by John Falls. William, you're all with the planning commission.
All right. Um, I'm, first off, not against affordable housing or diversity that is all, all this, uh, plan is wrapped up in uh, and presented as. And secondly, I do live in a single family residence. I'd like to see how many people that are on this panel or I can see on my screen if I hold their hand up and say they live in a single family residence right now. Anyway, um, no, nobody lives in a single family residence on the panel that I see on my screen. Okay. And the, the next thing I'd like to say is we worked hard for 30 years to pay for this home that I live in. Uh, last year I had to go back and fight the city all because they jacked my taxes way up because it said my property values went way up. And all I can see is that this is going to do is going to increase my property values. And being retired, I'm not particularly interested in being forced out of my home by increased taxes. And that's kind of the way we're headed with this. Not to mention perhaps the octogenarians that live out on either side of me, moving out and selling. And then I wind up with 212th, uh, unit apartment buildings on either side of me with all kinds of noise and things like that, which I'm not, uh, don't think is fair. You know, I, I do live on Grove Road and that's one of the areas that's in contention. And, uh, I think also, you know, the areas, they're, they're focused on areas around the schools, as I said, because this will be making more walkable neighborhood. Uh, you know, we moved to this neighborhood because of the schools, uh, being in close proximity. And, uh, it's worked out very well and we've raised our kids. They're out. Now I want to enjoy my retirement, but I'm not enjoying it if I'm not going to be able to afford to live here. And that's, I think, the way we're headed with this particular program. I know that, you know, the realtors and the bankers are probably shaking their heads. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And next, please.
Next, we have John Falls, uh, followed by Josh Cram. John, you're all in with the planning commission.
Can you unmute, John?
Unmute.
Yes.
Come on. All right. Thank you for hearing me and thank you for this task. Volunteer groups are very important in this city. I'd like to thank Jody La, La Handro. I think you're absolutely right. It should be incremental. Citywide is very dangerous and asking for a great deal. Thank you for saying that. I sent you a letter and, uh, I'm going to reiterate some of the things I said in that. I believe 10th and Page is in the crosshairs. It is the most desirable area in the city. It's walkable, bicycleable, uh, right close to all the places you want to be. You can't protect it. Uh, the overlay won't do it. I noticed that about a third is already owned by developers. You're making a developer's dream document. They're going to develop. And if you try to protect it, they'll have a court case that it's, oh, you can't make racial discrimination. I believe 10th and Page will end up being the Vinegar Hill of this document, of this, uh, period. One last question. You're ignoring parking. 15, uh, 15 building units probably will have to require 20, 25, even as much as 30 parking spots. Look at the pictures that you have on slides, 17 and 21. There are no trees. Your idea of medium density is a treeless community. It's going to look great on Rugby Road. On, uh, Barracks Road. You really want to get rid of them all? I think it's a mistake. Thank you for having me and thank you for doing what you're doing.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next, we have Josh Cram, followed by Kaky Pearson. Josh, you're all with the planning commission.
Hi, can you hear me? Uh, yeah, I'd like to use my, uh, two minutes to quickly, uh, read a condensed version of a letter that Livable Seville sent to planning commission and the council. That's been signed by over 140 community members as well as individual, indivisible and Charlottesville DSA. Uh, Livable Seville appreciates that the new map draft identifies a number of strategies to help stop displacement and encourage affordable housing creation in low income neighborhoods. However, we are concerned that the current map will limit the city's ability to meet its stated goal of providing diverse housing types accessible across income levels. Uh, the previous version of the map overrepresented the demands of affluent neighborhoods and wealthy homeowners. The latest draft continues to reflect their influence over the process, which is not consistent with Seville Plan's stated goals of inclusion. We ask the planning commission to take control of this process and produce a map that will address racist and exclusionary housing practices in every neighborhood in Charlottesville. We also ask that you view these issues through a climate lens. The city has pledged to cut greenhouse gas emissions by 45% by 2030. Allowing homes closer to jobs, schools and amenities is the most effective way to reduce per capita transportation and home energy use, which combined account for 57% of Charlottesville's carbon footprint. Uh, we suggest the following changes in anticipation of a zoning rewrite to meet our housing, housing and climate goals, uh, including, uh, an affordable housing overlay or whatever we end up calling it, to allow additional density citywide. Allow three and a half story buildings in general residential. Allow four unit dwellings by right, which are subject to the Fair Housing Act requirements for accessibility. Allow broader range of housing types, including stacked triplexes, row houses and cottage courtyards. Expand meeting and medium intensity residential to include more areas in affluent, historically exclusionary neighborhoods close to jobs, schools, retail and parks. Allow up to eight story height for the JPA student corridor to discourage student housing from pushing into sensitive neighborhoods surrounding the university. And finally, allow small commercial uses such as corner stores throughout the city. If we want walkable, bikeable, human scale neighborhoods, we have to allow amenities within a safe half mile trip of every resident. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Next, please.
Next, we have Kaky Pearson, followed by Kevin Hildebrand. Kaky, you're all with the planning commission. You have two minutes.
Please unmute. Kaky, are you, are you with us? Joe, can we come back to her, please?
Sure. Next, we have Kevin Hildebrand. Kevin, you're up with the planning commission. You have two minutes.
Uh, thank you very much. And, um, let me say, as you know, I'm against the corridor approach for the upzoning, uh, because I'm concerned about the long term impact on driving through the city. Uh, but that said, I'm curious as to why Monticello Avenue has not been included for upzoning since it's a major, uh, trans, transit corridor and also a gateway into the city. Uh, it seems like that's discordant with the impact you're putting on Elliott and Cherry Avenue. Um, my block of Cherry Avenue from Johnson Village down to, uh, Rock Creek Park road is very ethnically diverse. I think 40% black, 60% white. And yet this area is being proposed to be medium density, which will force most of that community to either relocate or somehow, um, be accommodated in this growth. So I think when you look at, uh, at, uh, special use areas, as you've defined as, uh, potentially predominantly black or low income, you are also affecting Cherry Avenue, which is historically in the last 50 years, a very mixed ethnic community. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention was that, uh, the exclusion of Oaklawn Plantation from the rezoning to medium intensity is contrary to your stated goals of increasing the density on Cherry Avenue as a corridor, since it has a major frontage along Cherry Avenue and is a nine acre tract. I do understand that it has a historic implication, uh, as the Fife family home and current home of Nancy O'Brien. Uh, but those, those overlays for historic preservation will protect the development around the house. But the land itself should be consistent with what you're proposing for all the quarter acre lots that are immediately adjacent to it. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next, we have Jennifer Horn, followed by Jo, Joseph Austrian. Jennifer, you're all with the planning commission. You have two minutes.
Is unmute?
It looks like, I apologize. It looks like, um, I'm getting a dialogue box here that says she is using an older version of Zoom. And we'll need to promote Jennifer to a panelist to talk. I'll defer to you, Chair.
I can accept that risk briefly. Jennifer, please don't do anything frightening. Welcome. Please unmute.
I apologize and thank you. Thank you so much for having me here. Um, first, there's a bafflement that this is happening when most of the residents affected do not know about this rezoning. I've talked to most of the members of my neighbor, many of the members of my neighborhood, and they had no idea this is happening. I've talked to most of the members of my neighbor, many of the members of my neighborhood, and they had no idea this is happening. Um, I'm in Belmont. I am in an area zone uh re- to be rezoned as medium density. The comprehensive plan states a desire to have a diverse group of people who work in Seville, teachers, nurses, cops, carpenters, to be able to live in Charlottesville. There's a hope that this working middle class will be able to own homes and create generational wealth. I live in Belmont and though there's some gentrification, Belmont is where diverse working-class homeownership happen. Unfortunately, this new future land use map and the rezoning proposed but to my property in a mixed-use area and my neighbors in medium density. I'm a high school teacher. My husband is a fabricator and carpenter. My immediate neighbors affected by this change include fellow teachers, nurses, a plumber, a barber, three more carpenters. The diverse middle-class homeowners that the comprehensive plan proposes to nurture and embrace are already homeowners in Belmont. Their homeownership is put in jeopardy by this future land use map. Additionally, the comprehensive plan celebrates homes that are divided, and Belmont has a plethora of multifamily rental homes. I do not understand why a neighborhood that is already nurt- is is already falling into the goals of the comprehensive plan is being targeted for, you know, change and destruction. In the last meeting, Mayor Walker asked whose voices were being heard in creating the zoning areas. I kind of want to know the same thing because I do not think it is the residents of Belmont. Thank you very much for your time.
And thank you. Next, please.
And I do believe Kaky Pearson re-raised her hand and we will go to her. I've connected with her one time. Kaky, if you can hear us, you're on with the planning commission. Oh, I I apologize, Chair. I think I clicked the wrong person. We have Eileen. Eileen, you're on with the planning commission. Kaky, if you hear us, we'll be on with you.
Oh, hi. Sorry. Can you hear me? Great. Uh, my name's Eileen Bartels and I live in Belmont and I would just like to thank you for all your hard work and also just tell you briefly that I support in largely I do support the future land use map. If anything, you I support um the letter that was read earlier about allowing even more density, more height. I think that it is critical for the future of Charlottesville that we increase density in all neighborhoods in Charlottesville. I don't, it all feels threatened by increased construction in my neighborhood. And I think that if we are going to do anything to survive climate change, it is time for people to huddle together, live close together, live close to where they work, and we have to give people the opportunity to do that. And I welcome more construction in Belmont. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, please.
We will once again try Kaky Pearson. Kaky, you are on with the planning commission. Are you there?
Thank you.
I had you and then I lost you.
I I am actually very much appreciating your time and efforts, all of you, into what you've been doing. It takes a village and more stuff. But I have some questions about what I've heard and you all are not being able to respond. I don't know if I'll get my answers, but specifically, there was a term omitted or has been a term omitted of acreage and it's been dropped. I don't understand why. And in its place, we're using lot. Well, there are some places in town that have like point eighteen of an acre and others have a half. There are even some that are larger. My question is, how can you use a term lot to mean the equal size to a point eighteen to a point fifty or larger? So I'm I'm unsure I understand that and it might have been explained before, but I'm asking it again. And um the two over two, if that is allowed near the historic, more or less historic, even moving out towards nonhistoric and Park Street and stuff. If a two over two is allowed in that area, will it be required to look something like the um area of the historic buildings that are there? Okay, my time's up. Thank you very much again. I appreciate your time.
So, Mr. Chair, my recommendation to you uh is that you allow staff to get back to the advocate. Very technical questions. So staff could probably deal with it better than we could.
That is possible. Uh, team staff, is that a possibility? We believe we can do that, but uh, we generally cannot do that. We cannot do that for every person. Next, please.
And next, we have Joseph Ostrom, followed by William Buchanan. Joseph, you're on with the planning commission. You have two minutes.
Hi, y'all. Um, just would like to say thank you to everybody for who's called in as well as everyone who's on the commission. Speaking as to the presentation earlier, it seemed uh, the tone seemed defeatist to me. For instance, I believe Mr. Sessom stated that every lot in Charlottesville is different and not everyone could support twelve units. I mean, I don't, that's a categorically false statement. We've been building up for hundreds, if not thousands, of years. Um, I think what he's really saying is that not every person in Charlottesville, or perhaps him, wants a twelve-story unit beside them. I think that's different. And those kinds of lesions, when you are making planning decisions that are paternalistic like that, I don't think benefit the community, especially, you know, I started elementary school in nineteen ninety-two and the city was a quarter the poverty was still a quarter of the city's population. It's thirty years later and still the same thing. And so when you have people in the commission talk about infill as being a conflict or will be a future conflict, the conflict is already happening, you know. And this is not to speak about, um, you know, Commissioner Landrow specifically against him, but he's winning his, you know, you can go on GIS and see that his, the value of his lot has gone up by two hundred thousand dollars just in the assessed value since he bought it. You know, he's winning right now. It is not, it is not the, it is not the people that are not afford, not available, don't have the ability to to purchase land, to purchase homes. Those are the people that are continuously losing right now. So when you talk about starting a war, the war, this war is already happening. And I just would like the commission to be cognizant of that fact. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. And let's please leave individual names out of this. Let's focus on the problems here. Next, please.
And next up, we have William Buchanan, followed by Brandon Collins. William, you're on with the planning commission. You have two minutes.
Okay. First thing I'd like to say is, Jody and Heather, thank you very much for asking questions and getting answers tonight. I'm impressed. Somebody is listening. Um, I don't know where to start. I don't much like what I see in the in the plan. Um, the uh multifamily housing is is just, it doesn't fit in a single-family neighborhood. I'm gonna be one of these people that's aging in place. I'm seventy-two now. Um, I'm one of those rich white people that uh, I've been hearing, hearing people talk about. I've worked as a carpenter all my life. I have finally topped forty thousand dollars a year. I live in Greenbrier neighborhood. And I got here by saving every penny I had. Um, so don't talk to me about about rich white privilege. I haven't had any. Um, please listen to the people that are trying to tell y'all what we see is wrong with the plan. It's not that we oppose change. It's we oppose illogical change. Um, this thing, this thing is crazy. Um, half the people in this town still look at you like you're crazy when you tell them that there's gonna be a rezoning. They go, what? They still don't know about it. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And next, please.
And next, we have Brandon Collins, uh, and after that is Tim Wallace. Brandon, you're on with the planning commission.
Good evening, planning commission. Uh, my name is Brandon Collins. I am a Charlottesville resident. I've lived here my entire life. I have uh three children who are, some are growing up here and one did grow up here, um, as did I. I first want to say um that I am enthusiastic about the progress that's been made uh on the comprehensive plan and the land use map. I think we are inches away from having uh something in place uh that can be be approved and uh, for the first time in our city's history, I think takes a bold approach to doing something different, not in incremental ways, uh, but something that breaks with the status quo in a meaningful and helpful way. And in those ways, uh, it's addressing displacement. It's addressing segregation in housing, which still exists. It addresses the affordable housing crisis in Charlottesville in our region and our country, and it addresses the climate crisis. It's not gonna solve everything and there's still a lot of unknowns. The land use map um is a guide. And it needs to be taken in context with the affordable housing strategy and the zoning rewrite that is upcoming that will take quite some time to get through the details. And I think those details are definitely what matter. Uh, but the bones of of all of this, uh, as shown in the future land use map are very strong. Uh, and I personally support it and I know uh many of my colleagues and neighbors support it. I do, uh, I am grateful to Commissioner Mitchell for uh bringing up the issue of the subdivision loophole. Uh, and I look forward to engaging on that some more. I think you can be bold. Um, I think it will take some creative effort to get there um through policy uh and ordinance change potentially. And I understand uh the baked-in uh overlay idea, um, but I do think having a visual as a way to be able to explain that to Charlottesvilleans who who still don't quite understand what that means, um, could be helpful. And I'm uh encouraging you to take even stronger language and stronger action um on displacement and gentrification, but on the whole, I am very supportive. And I I think the consultants have done a great deal of work and will continue to do a great deal of work. I've been disappointed that some in the community have um downplayed their work or not understood their expertise. Uh, I'm glad to see that the planning commission does. I'm glad to see the planning commission is deeply engaged in this and uh and making decisions. So I just wanted to get all that out there on the table and I hope you all have a beautiful evening.
Thank you. And please, uh, two minutes. Uh, next, please.
Next, we have Tim Wallace, followed by Mary Whittle. Tim, you're on with the planning commission. You have two minutes.
Hello, can you hear me? Um, I want to start off by thanking everyone for all of the uh tremendous work you have done to this point and all of that labor. It is greatly appreciated. I will spare you the philosophical part by just saying I agree with everything Brandon just said. Um, and um, I, um, my comment tonight is is very narrow and very specific, which is and I'm very glad that I listened to the whole uh presentation earlier because I, one thing I didn't understand was that the sensitive community areas protections only apply to general residential. And so my goal here is to advocate for my neighbors. I live in the Meadows on Shelby Drive. Um, my backyard is the uh transition between the urban mixed core, urban mixed-use corridor on hydraulic there and the general residential in the Meadows. And uh, um, you're missing the mark in terms of the people that you want to protect in the Meadows with the sensitive community areas. If you leave um Swanson Drive and Cedar Hill uh unprotected by that sensitive community area. And so whether you would downzone those two areas or whether you would extend the sensitive community areas to those two streets, uh, those two streets are predominantly mixed family or um multifamily homes. Um, the, for our neighborhood association, we had, we had a meeting yesterday in an effort to get people out. This weekend, I knocked on every door, every apartment, every duplex, every um threeplex, whatever it's called, every house on um on those two streets. And I can't speak for them, but I can speak of them. They are lovely people. And we do not want to, I think there was a, there's a shared value. We do not want to build more housing density at the expense of older, more affordable housing units. Those those apartment buildings were built in the fifties. We want to build housing elsewhere to bring those rents down, to keep those rents affordable. So, thank you.
Thank you. And next, please.
And next, we have Mary Whittle, followed by Ocean Yellow. Mary, you're on with the planning commission. You have two minutes.
Hi, um, I just have a quick question. Um, one is that, you know, I'm hearing all this um talk obviously about changing the city, um, really pretty radically for affordable housing, but um my understanding is that you guys don't actually know how many units of affordable housing we have or how many um we need. And I I heard um Council Snook say that at the end of the last meeting. My understanding further is that we will not have that information until 2022. So I'm a little confused about making huge um changes without actually knowing how many people we're talking about or what their needs are. Second thing I want to say is I've heard nothing but kind of the grass is greener. It's gonna be a utopia once the city is denser. I have actually lived in a city that is, it has exactly the density, university city, exactly the density that we seem to be aiming for. So we're about forty-seven hundred. I lived in a city that was about nine thousand five hundred people per square mile, which is Cambridge, England. And I want to tell you a little bit of what it was like. You got row over row terrace houses along streets about the same width as Barracks, uh, Rugby or Dairy Road. And it was incredibly noisy. I heard people fighting in bars. I got to hear uh lovers having quarrels in the middle of the night. The traffic was impenetrable. Uh, you could not get your children into a school. I see you laughing, Mr. Mitchell. You you had to get on a long waiting list to try to get your kids into school. There were constant bike accidents. The sidewalks were so crowded, you had to walk into the street. The housing price there, you can get a little flat for about seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, I went there thinking it'd be great. I'm gonna get to walk to the grocery store. This is gonna be super. And and actually, it was an incredibly difficult place to live and they had all the infrastructure in place that we don't. They had sidewalks, biking trails, uh, park and ride, buses. They had everything. We have none of it. I don't see how this is gonna work. Every single person who came to visit us in Cambridge said, what a shame. This used to be such a nice place to live. Thank you.
And thank you. Next, please.
Next up, we have Ocean Nielo, followed by Catherine Loughlin. Ocean, you're on with the planning commission. You have two minutes.
Hi there. Um, can everyone hear me? Great. Thanks for having me. Uh, my name is Ocean Nielo. I'm a Charlottesville resident and a staff member at the Haven, a day shelter supporting folks experiencing homelessness and housing instability in our community. Every day, I see the guests of the shelter, the staff members and volunteers come face-to-face with the brutal reality of Charlottesville's housing crisis. Even with the income to pay rent, it is nearly impossible to find housing for a lot of our clients that is both safe and affordable within the city, uh, the city in which many of these individuals have lived their entire lives. I believe we must absolutely center the need for affordable housing units in neighborhoods that have historically excluded black and low-income families and kept our neighborhoods segregated, so we can ensure that everyone in our city can thrive. So as you finalize your recommendations to city council, I ask that you all continue to prioritize equity and affordability in the future land use map, um, which I think is in alignment with the stated intention of this entire planning process. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. And next, please.
And next up, we have Catherine Loughlin, followed by James Groves. Catherine, you're on with the planning commission.
A great, thank you. Um, thank you all for your work. I know how much work it's been for me just to send you. A great, thank you. Um, thank you all for your work. I know how much work it's been for me just to send you emails and attend the few meetings I've attended. So I can't imagine the hours you put into this. Um, I'm, um, speaking tonight as, as myself, as a resident of Charlottesville, but I just want to point out that I'm also the vice chair of the Human Rights Commission, um, and believe firmly that housing is a human right. As a nurse, I believe housing is absolutely help. And as Ocean just said eloquently, we have a crisis and we absolutely need to address it. Um, I want to reiterate the, um, goals of the livable Seville letter that you've already received. I don't need to repeat them here. And want to emphasize that we absolutely do not need to move incrementally. We cannot move incrementally. We need to make big changes. We need to make them quickly. It is going to be disruptive to some neighborhoods and it's just going to have to be. That includes my neighborhood. Um, so I look forward to your leadership on this issue and to, uh, city council's, um, subsequent leadership and and creating a, uh, a bold plan that will meet the needs of our city.
Thank you. Uh, next, please.
Next, we have James Groves, followed by Caroline Klosko. James, you're with the planning commission. You have two minutes.
Hi, I'm James Groves. The comprehensive plan discussions this year have made me reflect on my values and priorities. I value good local government. And to me, that means government that does no harm and is honest. When I look at the future land use map and the associated environmental implications of that map, I see harm and dishonesty. On August 31st, I expressed concern regarding the teardown of existing homes, which is wasteful and environmentally irresponsible. If the city allows more than four units per lot, demolition will happen, especially if developers can merge lots as suggested tonight. So why is demolition dishonest? Well, you have told us for months that one of the goal in this comprehensive plan is to minimize demolition permits. Yet the current plan does nothing to minimize demolitions. You won't even show us images of 12 unit medium intensity homes on slide 21 tonight. That's dishonest. I support infill. I do not support demolition. Also, the environmental chapter of the comprehensive plan states a goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions by 45% this decade. Yet tearing down homes for five plus units and allowing their replacements to hook up city gas will assure this goal is not met. If you vote to green light teardowns, five or more homes per lot and gas hookups, you are not being honest with yourselves or us. You cannot enact radical upzoning and deliver environmental protection under the current land use map and environmental chapter. Tonight, you have been silent about the environment and climate change. At least you are consistent. Over multiple years, this city has failed to produce a climate action plan. Ultimately, you may reveal that we are all environmental fools, but ultimately, nobody will fool Mother Nature.
And thank you. Uh, next, please.
Next, we have Caroline Klosko, followed by Benjamin Heller. Caroline, you're with the planning commission. You have two minutes.
Okay, uh, can everybody hear me? Can y'all hear me? Uh, so I am here for Click. That's the Charlottesville Low Income Housing Coalition. And I wanted to first echo a lot of the other commentators and say, thank you. Thank you so much for your work here. We support what you're trying to do. We're excited about this map. We're excited about the comp plan. Um, we're getting ready to get rid of single family zoning here, uh, with all the racist baggage that comes with it. This is historical. Um, I wanted to say a word about inclusionary zoning. That is where there's a mandate to build affordable housing in some circumstances so that developers who build projects of a certain size are required to include a certain proportion of affordable units. And this isn't mentioned in the map, but it's mentioned in the comp plan as a strategy. Now, we were very pleased to see this, but we would like to see the parameters drawn a bit more clearly. So the current draft is silent on the size of developments that would trigger the affordability requirement. It's silent on the percentage of units that would have to be affordable, and it's silent on the question of what affordable means in the context. That is, at what AMI the units would have to be affordable. We do understand that the details will be hammered out in the zoning ordinance, but we think the plan could make the notion of inclusionary zoning in our community a little bit more concrete. Uh, these sorts of things are certainly in line with the level of detail that's in other parts of the comprehensive plan. And without it, it just doesn't have any teeth. Thank you.
And thank you. Uh, next, please.
And next, we have Benjamin Heller, followed by Kristin Zekos. Benjamin, you're on with the planning commission. You have two minutes.
Hi there. I, I saw a headline on Glimmer yesterday. It said soaring housing inequality is now a global political fall. So we're doing obviously the big problem, but housing prices have gone parabola recently at a lot of places. They were Seoul, Korea, to Hamilton, Ontario, to places with a rental heavy model like Berlin, places with a public housing model like Singapore. Those models have worked really well until very recently. Singapore HDB, and these guys know what they're doing. They're doing seventy five thousand housing starts a year on a stagnant population, and they still saw big increases. The OECD Global Housing Affordability Age blew past its record 2006 level last year. We're a little town, but we're subject to global forces. And the breadth of this phenomenon tells me this is, you know, less about R1 and Harlan Bartholomew, more about M1 and Jay Powell. The fact that prices have challenged places with every kind of housing model, uh, market model tells you it's probably not about your housing market model. And Charlottesville seen its home prices lag US home price growth since 2010. Our rents are in the mid 50s percentile for similarly, uh, dense cities. We're the tail and not the dog. And you're proposing something, a wholesale change of mostly single family housing areas to four to 12 units that really no place has done. California recently enacted a law moving the lowest level to four units. The idea that this little town and this group has cracked the code that has eluded everybody else seems really far fetched to me. We need to recognize that if there are larger forces at play, we should be thinking less about the magic beans of a bleeding edge new model and more about solving specific problems. Maybe finding the resources to subsidize the building by a thousand or so, uh, units of housing with low costs that when I look at the numbers, I see we're short via a community land trust or something like the New York Mitchell Lama model, but directly as we can, not prayerfully, uh, by means of a Rube Goldberg plan. You, you can't fight the Fed, as they say, but maybe you can build some affordable units directly. And I want to just point out something that Commissioner Stolzenberg said about really going, um, making the most of the commercial spaces. I think that's something where we can turn, uh, what's really going to be a terrible liability into an asset, and I hope that there's more focus on that, uh, going forward.
And thank you. Next, please.
Next up, we have Kristin Zekos, followed by Roger Ray. Kristin, you're on with the planning commission.
Uh, good evening. Um, as you may know, I, I served on city council for eight years and I worked hard to support affordable housing development during my tenure. Uh, I saw project after project fail to be built because of current zoning and SUP regulations and pushback from well organized, more affluent neighbors about things like traffic, noise and parking. I'm optimistic that this comprehensive approach will help to ease the concerns of neighbors because of its very comprehensive nature. I've heard folks who are anxious about these changes say they feel the city needs to slow down the process of adopting the land use map and updating the city zoning ordinance and that it hasn't been carefully considered enough. And I urge you to hold fast, no pun intended, to the timeline that you've adopted and to resist efforts to decrease your recommended density in more affluent neighborhoods. I'm intrigued by the expansion of the affordable affordability bonus and the house preservation in other neighborhoods to allow up to four units in general residential, and I hope you'll look at that further. I love the medium intensity areas of downtown, uh, north downtown and Locust Grove, as well as the rugby area. As a resident of Locust Grove, I support the concept outlined in the land use map for more intensity of residential use. Locust Grove has been relatively affordable, but we're seeing bigger and bigger houses being retrofit on existing lots under the current regulations. We know that adequate affordability won't be built in these neighborhoods under the current land use and zoning regulations, and that incremental improvements will not solve our affordability shortage. The structural changes created by this process are critical if we're going to be able to make this a city where workers, elderly residents, young people and families can live. And I also just wanted to mention that I am a signatory to the livable Seville letter that was read by Josh Cron. Thanks.
And thank you, Councilor. Uh, next, please.
And next, we have Roger Ray, followed by Bill Emery. Roger, you're with the planning commission.
Yes, I want to take this opportunity to express my concerns with the rezoning of Charlottesville's residential neighborhoods in general. I moved from Fairfax in 2018 and purchased my single family home in a neighborhood zoned R1. I never expected I'd be in the position of trying to save my neighborhood from a rezoning plan to the last three to four story mixed use development. While it has been said that this has been a four year process, I looked at the master plan before I purchased my house. There was no mention of rezoning. I only heard about it from a neighbor in March of 21 and had to do some digging to find out what was going on. The rezoning plan currently being considered appears to have been developed in the dark without complete studies and without input from impacted areas. In the public Zoom meeting held a few weeks ago, it was obvious that there were few, if any, attempts to get inputs from any neighborhoods before plans were made to rezone most of the city. It was also evident that the consultants did not study the impact to the infrastructure, including water, sewer, schools, and impacted traffic and parking. Let's face it, no one's going to give up their car. When Fairfax began changing zoning to allow a higher density of housing, it did nothing for the creation of affordable housing. Developers had the opportunity to pack more houses on less property and continue to sell homes for what the market would allow. I would not expect developers in Charlottesville to act any differently. Attempting to achieve some sort of affordable housing through higher density has failed in other cities, and I would not expect it to be any different here in Charlottesville. Developers won't go for buying up property in the more expensive neighborhoods. The big profit will be in redeveloping the sensitive communities. As I look around Charlottesville, there are many pieces of underutilized retail properties. And let's face it, those businesses are never coming back. Perhaps the city could build and maintain some affordable housing on these sites. In closing, I fear for the Fairfaxing of Charlottesville. It still has that small town feel, and I would hate to see that evaporate. I would encourage members of the planning commission to take a field trip to Fairfax, Montgomery County, Maryland, or even Warrington to see what this actually looks like. Thank you for your time, and I can only hope that more time will be spent on this important task before any final decisions are made. And if you need a tour guide, I'll be happy to assist. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next, please.
And next up, we have Bill Emery, followed by Emily Dreyfus. Bill, you're on with the planning commission.
Thank you. Good evening. Earlier this month, I respectfully requested that the medium intensity residential designation be removed from roughly 120 R2 and PU D zone parcels along Riverside Avenue and River Bluff Circle cul-de-sac. This street is the longest dead end street in Charlottesville. It is not a neighborhood corridor. It's a dead end street. Currently, 75% of the residents fronting the street are affordable. This is the remote, most remote neighborhood in town. It is the hardest neighborhood in Charlottesville city limits to the Charlottesville Fire Department and the emergency medical services to access. It is the only residential area the fire department can't drive to in less than eight minutes. I would like to understand which selection criteria directed you to locate intense residential density here. Why slate an existing 75% affordable neighborhood for potential destruction? Why locate medium intensity residential so far away from stores, schools and employment at a bottom of a hill down by the river? Have you tried walking, biking or riding transit from here to anywhere? Have you spoken to the residents? This is the last place in the shitty city you should be increasing density. It is irresponsible, arbitrary and capricious. It is a dangerous decision. It is bad planning. Please change the designation on this cul-de-sac to residential, general residential. And I thank, uh, several of you for your comments this evening, uh, reckon is recognizing the plight of Riverside. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And next.
And next up, we have Emily Dreyfus, followed by Mary Bauer. Emily, you're on with the planning commission.
Thank you, and thank you to the planning commission and city council for your four years of work on this process and congratulations for getting to this point. I ask you to wrap your arms around the severe impacts of history locally. Racist zoning, land takings, educational inequities and economic impacts have created a massively unjust housing situation, and we need your vision to repair and reposition the city. I hope you will take a more ambitious approach to the future land use map. Slate tweaks to the status quo should not be the goal. Incorporating four unit townhouses gives a useful tool and one which will make a minimal impact on aesthetics. It will also make a relatively small impact on the affordable housing problems we face. As a reminder, we need solutions that will meet the needs of thousands of people, the majority of whose incomes are under 50% of the area median income. We need medium intensity residential, and we need you to ensure that it is an effective tool for integrating historically exclusionary neighborhoods and more aggressively than we see it in the current version. The proposed incentive of building a fourth unit of affordable housing is not a very functional tool because it's unlikely to be utilized. The second unit needs to be required as affordable. Otherwise, market rate development will be the majority of the results and more displacement may occur. The Charlottesville Low Income Housing Coalition urges you to prioritize remedying racial and economic inequities. This requires integrating neighborhoods where some residents are loudly opposing change. We have been conducting outreach over the past few months in a predominantly black neighborhood and have confronted almost universal hopelessness about this process. We need to do better. Thank you.
And thank you. Uh, next, please.
And next, we have Mary Bauer, followed by Elizabeth Stark. Mary, you're on with the planning commission.
Good evening. Thank you. Um, I am a resident of Belmont and I'm, uh, here this evening in my capacity as chair of the Human Rights Commission. The Human Rights Commission has, uh, sent you all a letter and has supported the aims and goals of the, um, Seville, livable Seville letter, um, specifically, but, um, I just want to talk about this briefly from the perspective of human rights, because that's what we're talking about here. The mission of the Human Rights Commission is to provide citywide leadership and guidance in the area of civil rights. And as such, we seek to identify and push the city to dismantle systemic racism as it exists in Charlottesville. It would be difficult to identify a law that is more directly linked to white supremacy than our current zoning ordinance, which was enacted specifically for the purpose of achieving and codifying racial segregation in housing. Now, in the name of protecting neighborhood character, the discourse about the future land map has been co-opted. It has co-opted the language of racial justice in pursuit of the, the goal of maintaining a status quo that was built on exclusionary zoning laws and restrictive covenants. The commission strongly supports changing our land use and zoning laws to permit and encourage the construction of affordable housing. Only substantial change in policy and allocation of substantial money will begin to repair the many decades of harm done through restrictive covenants, exclusionary zoning laws, and along with the deliberate destruction of black homes and neighborhoods. Additionally, the increased density will allow us to better meet our climate goals, as the recent flooding in New York City demonstrated, the adverse effect of climate change are borne most directly by the black indigenous and immigrant communities most affected by inequity. Uh, I want to thank you all for the hard work that you've put into this process, and it's gone on a long time, um, and we appreciate that work. Um, and we, we strongly support a diverse, uh, and racially just city. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, next, please.
And next up, we have Elizabeth Stark, followed by Martha Smythe. Elizabeth, you're on with the planning commission. You have two minutes.
Hi there. Uh, my name's Elizabeth Stark and I live in the Woolen Mills neighborhood. I'd like to see the city continue to push forward on the important work of creating a more dense, walkable and inclusive city. And I support and signed on to the recommendations put forth on 914 by Livable Seville. In affluent neighborhoods across the city, homeowners are fighting against greater density in favor of the status quo that benefits them personally and financially at the expense of renters, would be homeowners and prospective residents. That the so-called character they're seeking to preserve in their neighborhoods is the echo of explicit racist covenants doesn't matter to them. Nor does it matter that the artificial scarcity they fight for keeps other people locked out of the housing market. These landowners often tell us that they do support racial equity, but only when moves toward an equitable future have no effect on them personally. In other words, they support equity in a more sustainable city, just not in their own backyards. This boils down to a belief that in purchasing a plot of land, they've also purchased the right to direct what happens on every nearby plot of land. I'm heartened to hear that many of you continue to speak out in favor of density and affordability. The Privilege are pulling out all the stops and have shown how far they're willing to go to defend the status quo, whether that be comparing rezoning to the pain of a devastating crime, decrying the presence of local traffic without accounting for commuter traffic coming to town daily, suggesting that preserving several trees or old housing stock might trump the environmental benefits of a denser Charlottesville, or asking why those of us who want affordable housing don't just move to the urban ring. It's time to decide which side we are on. I'm firmly on the side of change, affordability, density, and equity. And I think it's time to create a Charlottesville not just for the wealthy and privileged, but for everyone. Thank you so much.
And thank you. Next, please?
And next, we have Martha Smythe, followed by Nancy Summers. Martha, you're on with the Planning Commission.
Good evening. I appreciate you calling on me and all the work that you have done. I'm wondering from where we are just today until this entire process will be completed, how long is that going to be? And if it's going to be more than about six months, it seems to me we ought to develop an urgent short-term plan to deal with the housing crisis that is amongst us. I'd like to see as many people that are in need of affordable housing to have opportunities to buy those homes and build their own equity rather than sticking them in apartments. And it really feels like a shove job, the way we talk about these apartments. And I know you don't mean that, but that's kind of how it hits me. I think that the solution that was mentioned earlier about community land trust would be a good place to look. I think we have plenty of vacant lots in this city and including some shopping areas that just sit there idle except maybe around Christmas that we could really put some housing up. And we already know there's transportation there and a lot of other advantages. So those look like very low hanging fruit. I think we should look at that first while we're finishing up all the work that needs to be done here. I've been curious all along about what the low income and people of color, low income are saying they want in these houses. I never hear us talk about that. Do they want to live with a bunch of white-bodied, middle-class people? Or would they rather live closer to people that are more in their, what they're used to, more of their neighbors today? I'm not wanting to discourage them. If they want to move next to me, that's great. I have a black neighbor two houses down, so it doesn't bother me. But it just seems to me that we ought to be paying good attention to what they need and what they would like before we start drawing up any plans. So that's what I have to say tonight. Thank you.
And thank you. And next, please?
Next up, we have Nancy Summers, followed by Diane Dale. Nancy, you're on with the Planning Commission. You have two minutes.
Hi. First of all, I was very glad to hear the word affordability used tonight. It was used over and over. And in the last meeting, I remember Jenny Gock saying that really this increased density, she couldn't really relate that to affordability. That was not an issue that had been raised. And of course, it is a very important issue. There are lots of ways that you can change a city and you can create affordability. And you've suggested one of them. Personally, I think the density alone does not create affordability. No one proves it did. There was an interesting article, I think Ben Heller mentioned it, about Californian density. And they said they looked it over and felt that through density, in a few hundred years, you could achieve affordability. I think that's a long time, frankly. But I do think that we need to realize that what we are doing is a choice, a very important choice for the city. I think everyone I know doesn't mind upzoning. It depends what kind of upzoning and where. Everyone would like to see, you know, a more diverse Charlottesville in ways. But I think we have to know that since no growth, we're trying to promote growth. When you say create density, you mean promote growth. You don't get density without people. So we want more people in our city. Well, how much, how many people do we want in our city? We really have to think about it. Our build-out plan for Charlottesville says there's no need for changing the zoning to accommodate a huge amount of growth, up to 100,000 people. So we are upzoning to create, to create, it could be massive growth in the city. How this will create affordability is a huge moot question. We don't know. I'd like to see affordability, and I think we're going to have to go at it directly, especially when you consider the global, absolutely global increase in housing costs. We aren't going to be doing this by getting developers to create a Charlottesville with 100,000 people. That's not going to do the trick. We have to go at the problem directly.
Thank you. Next, please?
And next, we have Diane Dale, followed by Claire Griffin. Diane, you're on with the Planning Commission. You have two minutes.
Thank you. When the consultants reminded us this evening that at the beginning of the meeting that the affordability and equity have been prioritized through this process, I would hope that this is not at the expense of other important elements of the plan, in particular, the environment. Thus far, I find the environmental and climate change chapter to be pretty standard, pretty standard, and it lacks the detail that is enjoyed, particularly in the land use plan with sub-strategies. There are strategies that are often not articulated further with sub-strategies. Lacks innovation, and it doesn't really acknowledge integration with the land use plan and map. This evening, we have seen the value that's been added with the specialists who've been brought on the team to address housing and zoning. They acknowledge, however, that critical questions will be needed to be addressed in the zoning update. I don't believe that the process has enjoyed the benefit of an environmental specialist on the team. So as you go forward into the next phase of this work with regard to the zoning update, I urge the city to ask the team to add an environmental consultant to help the team assess the environmental impacts of these new and untested approaches to land use that will inherently add in previous coverages, surface coverage, as lots or density is added to the lots. They're going to reduce tree cover. I remind you of the long discussion you had last week about infill and JPA. And they're going to increase the urban heat island effect. I hope you're paying attention to Biden's heat initiative, for example. We need to ensure that as we add housing, as we address affordability, as we address equity, all great things to be doing, that we're developing a plan that is equally environmentally intelligent in a livable way, pun intended. Thank you.
And thank you for the fun. And next, please?
And next up, we have Claire Griffin, followed by Crystal Passmore. Claire, you're on with the Planning Commission. You have two minutes.
Hi, everyone. Like I said, my name's Claire Griffin. I am a resident of Venable neighborhood. And I want to generally speak in support of the Livable Seville letter. I will repeat to everything that it said to save on some time. But I think it really concisely summarizes my opinion and why we need more housing and more equitable housing in Charlottesville. I did have one other point I wanted to make. I currently live in a 12-plex building in Venable, several blocks away from the main student housing. I am a researcher at UVA, not a student. I'm surrounded by single-family homes. I don't believe there's another multifamily home on my block. And one of the planning commissioners referred to 12 plexes as a monstrosity, I believe. And I found that pretty dismissive. I don't think that having a 12-plex next door is substantially harming the property values or making it a worse place to live. I like most of my neighbors. I like most of my neighbors in my building. We have a great community, and I think it's, I would like you to consider who is living in the 12 plexes as a valuable part of the community, not just who is living in the single-family homes around the 12 plexes. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And next, please?
And next, we have Crystal Passmore, followed by Genevieve Keller. Crystal, you're on with the Planning Commission. You have two minutes.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to say that people would like to live here and are not currently able to afford to. I think this is a flaw in our current zoning plan that we now have the opportunity to address. And I also wanted to say that the Seville Plans Together website talks specifically about addressing equity with this new plan. It says, "We need to listen to people whose voices are often absent." I would like to encourage you all to look at the map again with a thought of equity and making sure that historically absent voices are front of mind. I think it's great that we talked tonight about high-density and gray zones. Unaffordability overlay is also a great idea. But tonight, councilors also seem to be concerned that it might make financial sense for a historic house to use their yard for more housing. You seemed worried that a homeowner might have an apartment built near her house. We were told that corridors should be less central streets, should be on less central streets because those streets already are dense. A lot of people seem to be concerned that lots may be divided a couple too many times. I don't think these are the concerns of renters, of low-income residents. They're not the concerns of people who would benefit from equity or whose voices are often absent. I therefore support the asks of Livable Seville. I encourage you to keep pushing against the current zoning code. Push for more housing. Try to address the inequality that's been building for decades and is really the result of the system we currently have. I would also like to add that density is not a punishment. It's not inflicted on anyone. Renters would also like to age in place. Intensity means more small stores and restaurants. People are able to walk to businesses. Density makes it easier to age in place because you can live without a car. Density means rents cannot be ratcheted up because of dwindling supply. Mostly, I just wanted to express support for the Livable Seville asks and want you all to think about the voices that we're not hearing and why we aren't. Thanks.
Thank you. And next, please?
Next, we have Genevieve Keller, followed by Andrea Massey. Genevieve, you're on with the Planning Commission.
So genuinely, you're right. You made it. Yeah, still muted. Jen, we want to hear from you, so unmute.
I'm watching your microphone. It's muted. Let's please come back to her.
And next, we have Andrea Massey, followed by Valerie Long. Andrea, you're on with the Planning Commission. You have two minutes.
Hi, I'm Andrea Massey. I am a city resident. I'm on Elliot. Can you hear me? While I'm waiting. Thank you. Thank you all for your work, and thank you for the inclusion of the sensitive areas in the drawings and the explanations. That was really helpful. I'd like to ask for the proposed framework for the sensitive areas be extended to all the general residential. The second unit must be affordable. I hope that you will make sure that there is an extra allowance in all zoning districts if there is significant affordable housing. And with the subdividing, we just need to continue to look to make sure that we don't allow someone to be able to subdivide their lot to avoid affordability. So that is something we need to look at. Pretty heartbroken about the comment of unintended consequences of moving too fast. We're so far behind in where we should be as an equitable and just community. I just can't believe that a commissioner is saying that we need to wait. And are we waiting for the people in the historically exclusionary neighborhoods to be comfortable? If we're waiting for that, we'll be waiting forever. We need to ask now. That's heartbreaking for me to hear as someone who's not going to be affected financially by the new hopeful future land map and what we're doing with zoning. I can only imagine the heartbreak and the insulting, just the feeling like so insulted and maddening of that comment to people who have been waiting so long for just an equitable community. Thank you.
And thank you. And next, please?
Ms. Keller did re-raise her hand, so we will try her one more time. Ms. Keller, you're on with the Planning Commission. Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. Hello, colleagues and friends. We need to consider the economics of our commercial areas and how neighborhood commercial can better serve residents to complement and not harm our core commercial districts. With so much emphasis on housing, we haven't addressed commerce, business, and industry as economic generators for our city. You also need to ensure that smaller lots are not created by tearing down existing housing. Subdivisions that create infill and both types of ADU opportunities are good, but those that encourage tearing down our houses are not. We do not want to be a tear-down city that loses all its canopy trees. It will take a very detailed code to make this plan work for our city. Now, this will light up Twitter at both ends. But I'd like to see you consider within small area planning some true R2 areas and other four-unit areas for general residential, again, at all price points. And at the same time, find at least one high-density, semi-high residential or mixed-use high-rise site in each school district. There are valid reasons: mental health, life stages, economics, household needs, live-work. That people at all price points choose to live in less dense areas, just as many choose to live in more dense areas. A truly livable and resilient city will provide a range of housing choices at all scales, price points, and life stages. I am not a NIMBY. For 36 years, I've lived, worked in a three-plex between a six-story apartment building and a row of townhouses. But not everyone can or wants to do that. I've also long been concerned with Charlottesville's corridor planning approach, just another way of saying strip development, something thoughtful planning has abhorred since the 1970s. It's what our city has allowed on Ridge Street, Preston, East High, Harris, and Ivy Roads. And yet, this plan wants to create and expand corridors instead of filling out the ones we already have. The map reduces density in some areas that are already R3. I'm not convinced that equity or improved transit will be the result. I see Meadowbrook Heights Road and Avon Street, for example, as cultural opposites, but both have current reinvestments that fly in the face of making medium density realistic there. Transit can and does change routes, and in many cases, taking density a block or two off a primary corridor might have a better, more affordable resort, result. Medium-density corridors target historic listed and eligible areas that can accommodate infill conversions and limited expansions as their owners choose. But it might be better to take the medium density away from already busy streets and back to the park and school edges. Now, that would be especially reparative, given our history. I care about every inch of this city. This plan makes me tremble if you don't establish a future vision for new zoning that needs to be granular and well-considered for our 10 and 1/2 square miles. Thanks for all you do, and to all a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. Next?
And next, we have Valerie Long, followed by Mark Whittle. Valerie, you're on with the Planning Commission.
Good evening, members of the Commission and council and members of the consultant team. Thank you. I'm Valerie Long. I appreciate the opportunity to share my comments tonight. I have two that are generally similar in the sense that it's about changes that have been discussed about the plan, but the comments that have been made tonight have been along the lines that those changes would be addressed at the zoning stage. And my recommendation is that for both of the issues I mentioned tonight, that you go ahead and address them in the comprehensive plan at this stage because I think under both state law and the local zoning ordinance, that that's what is the most appropriate way to go and required. The first issue is with regard to the boundaries for the sensitive areas. I certainly applaud the goal and the intent of trying to address away, I support the goal of the sensitive area boundaries. I am concerned, like others have expressed, that the way the boundary lines were written or drawn, I think, and there's been great comments tonight about the desire to refine those at the zoning stage and that it only applies to the resident, the general residential areas, which is good. But my suggestion is go ahead and fix those lines now to reflect that. If you really only are intending for it to apply to the general residential areas, go ahead and do that. Say that in the map now. Because if you wait until the zoning stage... arguably, a change would then be inconsistent with the adopted comprehensive plan. And I think you would preclude actions like that. Similarly, with regard to suggestions that have been made about planning to address the comments at the zoning stage about higher building heights in certain commercial areas like JPA, Fontaine, downtown, et cetera. I think those need to be addressed now in the zoning map in the comp plan. Otherwise, if you wait until the zoning stage, a change could be inconsistent with what, with what is in your comprehensive plan. So, quick example before my time runs out. Right now, the comp plan map, draft map says high-density residential shall not exceed five floors. In this zoning ordinance, if you, you discuss it and there's areas around JPA, for instance, that are designated for high-density residential, I don't believe you'd be able to then adopt a zoning ordinance that says high-density residential can have eight stories. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, please.
And next, we have Mark Whittle, followed by Charlotte Meadows. Mark, you're on with the planning commission.
Thank you. Yes. Listening to the earlier discussions by the council and planning commission, I'm staggered by a simple fact. I would say that 98% of the discussion concerns affordable housing, and this discussion includes major surgery to the entire city, driven almost entirely by this single issue. And yet, amazingly, the actual study that is designed to find out how many affordable houses the city currently has and how many are needed has yet to be done. Yes, you heard me correctly. After $1 million and nearly two years for RHI to develop a plan with affordability as its main driver, the city has only recently agreed to pay another $165,000 again to RHI to get the data that would allow us to begin an informed discussion of this dominant issue. I'm flawed by the fact that you can continue this detailed discussion of affordability. Every neighborhood and road interpreted through the lens of whether or not it will increase the amount of affordable units. And yet, you have zero data at this time. Anyone would think we have 50,000 people needing affordable housing, but is it 500, 5,000, or what? Surely, this number is needed before we embark on any detailed discussion of surgery on the entire city. Surely, a comprehensive plan is, well, comprehensive, meaning it's supposed to look at the needs of the entire population of the city. It seems to me that the direct interests of 90% of the population has been excluded from this plan or included only to the extent that their neighborhoods play a role in generating affordable housing. Don't misunderstand me. Along with probably all of Charlottesville citizens, I would like to promote affordable housing. But A, it needs to be not just one element of the comprehensive plan that considers many other folks and many other issues, which are notably absent. And B, to not have the primary study, which gives the actual numbers of needed houses is staggeringly unprofessional and seems to me to undermine all the current discussions, which are completely ungrounded in the absence of the simple number of necessary units. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whittle. Next.
And next, we have Charlotte Meadows, followed by Josh Karp. Charlotte, you're on with the planning commission. You have two minutes.
Good evening, all. I do want to thank everyone for their, all their efforts and long hours and late evenings. It's been a lot of effort and work. The main weakness that I do see in what is being presented is for one, regardless of how long the comprehensive planning has been going on, people have only started to hear about it as of March, and the majority of my neighbors have only known about it because of my efforts personally to stop them on the street, sit and chat and say, hey, by the way, do you know? And they don't know. It's scary. We are talking about some major, major studies that need to be done on what's actually going on. I think all of this are for, are for affordable housing. I think to suggest otherwise, that people may need, want R1 zoning does not mean that they do not want affordable housing and whether it's next to them or not. A lot of the statements that have been made by the different groups that are represented by people speaking here are fairly inflammatory, and there are no studies to actually show that we really have a housing crisis. Where are the studies that are provided to show that we have a housing crisis? What is our population growth for the projection of our future? And we need to come to some logical conclusions instead of using all of these emotions to drive a major force and a major change that will forever impact what Charlottesville, the nature of Charlottesville itself, the beauty, the grace, and spaciousness, which is what people want when they move here. I also want to, ooh, I'm out of time. I am concerned about infrastructure not being properly studied and bolstered as well. I'm sorry for going over. Good evening.
Thank you. Next, please.
And next, we have Josh Karp, followed by Dan Moran. Josh, you're on with the planning commission.
Hey, can you hear me? So I'll try and keep it short. Most of my opinions are reflected well by the logic already gotten from the Seville, have set humanity and so on. I have one comment and two suggestions. Comment is congratulations to new, I believe, Chair, Commissioner Rollerstates. And your nickname, Lila Tio. Onto substance, sorry. So, one point is that there was a shining moment over, over the summer when there was a possibility of like building some fall plexes in Lewis Mountain, north downtown, some parts of Belmont. These are great areas to build. They are close to either downtown or UVA. They have transit. They're close to stores. This is exactly the kind of place that we say we want to build more housing in. And lots of people filling out the Quick Survey, for example, said we want more density in historically exclusionary neighborhoods. That density kind of vanished. The only reason given is that people in the neighborhoods complained. And I just want you to, I want, I want to encourage you to listen less to the voices of people who already have secure housing and more to the voices of people who don't have it, who are at risk of being priced out, who have been priced out already. So, point one, please consider putting some housing back in those neighborhoods. That's Lewis, Lewis Mountain Rugby Hills where I used to live in Belmont and, and north downtown. Let me see. Point two, so we talk a lot about how we don't want to allow developers to build unaffordable kinds of housing. I agree. It turns out that the kind of housing that is most expensive and worst for climate, among other things, is single-family housing. And so what I ask you, what I ask you to think about is if somebody wants to come build a bunch of single-family homes and they aren't affordable, which most of them aren't and can't be, consider some kind of impact fee or affordability requirement, not just for apartments, which are good for climate, but for single-family homes, which are bad for climate and bad for affordability. Three seconds left. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next.
And next up, we have Don Moran, followed by Julia Whiting. Don, you're on with the planning commission.
Hello. I've attended these meetings since the original map was released in March this year. I'm for affordable housing, but against this plan for the following reasons. One, affordability is not defined or it is, and it has not been studied, as one of the recent speakers just pointed out. As a result, we don't know what we need, when we will need it. Two, there's been no study of what the cost will be to the city of the build-out called for by the plan or how it will be funded. Three, there are no enforcement rules to hold developers to promises or proffers for affordable housing. Four, the plan is built on increasing density without any evidence that increased density will result in more affordable housing. During public meetings, the public, the planning commission and its consultants had stated that density will not increase affordable housing. And once again, that was repeated tonight. The plan calls for the building of multi-unit residential housing that will result in the building of luxury apartments for students in areas that are now single-family residential communities, because there is no plan for enforcing developer promises of affordable housing. Seven, the plan has been objected to by at least the plurality, if not a majority, of the city residents who have commented on it. Eight, the planning commission and its consultants have not worked with Almonar County or the University of Virginia to coordinate a community-wide plan to increase affordable housing. Nine, the planning commission and its consultants have not looked into using current city land assets as possible sites for affordable housing. Have to comment that some of that was mentioned this evening. I'm glad it was. The planning commission and its consultants have admitted that density will not increase affordable housing. This plan will abolish single-family residential neighborhoods everywhere in the city. With this latest map, single-family residential neighborhoods will be destroyed even in sensitive community areas. Increased density will turn more city residents into renters, not homeowners. And that will be, and what will be available to rent will not be affordable because this plan does not define what is affordable housing. The plan calls for more density without telling us how and why density could create more affordable housing. This is not what the citizens of Charlottesville want or need. We want to increase affordable housing using a plan that's based on the analysis of needs and costs and an explanation of how and why that plan will work.
Thank you very much.
And doesn't contain any of it. Thank you all for your work and service.
Next, please.
Next, we have Julia Whiting, followed by James Chang. Julia, you're on with the planning commission.
Can you check your microphone? You may be muted. Can try unmuting. All right, let's try the next one, please.
And next up, we have James Chang. James, you're on with the planning commission.
Hi, thank you for, for all your hard work and for your time. I'm a representative of the Meadows Neighborhood Association, and as I've said before, we're kind of late to the ballgame. And we're just getting up to speed, as one of the earlier commenters said, we met recently, but I guess basically, I just wanted to kind of make you aware of who we are, kind of put you in, in your minds. And so we are traditionally, kind of we see ourselves as kind of an orphaned neighborhood and somewhat overlooked, but we're for, we're, we're in the same neighborhood as the Best Buy. We're, to the north, we have the shops at Stonefield and Hydralic Road. To the south, we have Barracks, Barracks Road and 250 bypass. To the east, we have Hydral, sorry, 29. And to the west, we have Georgetown. So, and then we share a neighborhood with the county, but it's all, it's, it's all just kind of a, we're kind of landlocked by all the highways. We're a majority-minority neighborhood, I believe, or we're at best 50/50. We're mostly working class. Some, I guess you could say, an at-risk community and also people who are wanting to age in place. And let's see, as far as, as far as what our neighborhood is like, the biggest concern or the biggest challenge for us is we don't have any green space. We don't have any schools. We don't have any parks. We don't have any playgrounds whatsoever, except for to the extent that there's a church in the middle of our neighborhood that provides that. So we, and we also don't have any connectivity to any areas. So to the extent that any change happens, we, we would welcome a lot of change, but also realize that it will have a big impact on us because of our situation. So all this, again, is just to open up the lines of communication. We'll probably become communicating with you somewhat in the coming days, and we just hope that you'll pay attention to what we have to say, because, you know, we just want to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And next.
Next, we have Jamir Smith, followed by Joy Johnson. Jamir, you're on with the planning commission. You have two minutes.
Thumbs up if you can hear me. All right, cool. So I would like to follow up and agree with a lot of the people who have co-signed with the Livable Seville letter. I do think that we need to see, and not only an increase of affordable housing, but just an increase of multifamily units throughout the city. I know a speaker previous to me had spoken about the increase of more multifamily units back in areas like Lewis Mountain and Barracks Rugby, areas that are very much like not only single-family, but also some of the most expensive areas to live at in the city and are also closest to, to the biggest employer in the city, which is the University of Virginia. So thinking about how we can kind of just like, like redefine those areas to make it to where people who are able to live closer to where they work, where they go to school, would be something that's amazing. I think one of the things that makes me chuckle a lot is when there are always comments of kind of like delaying the plan because it doesn't seem there's a lot of like researcher asks, or like researcher, like, like the time that have been put into it. And I think that is such an extremely like classes and privileged point of view to come from, because there clearly, they aren't the people that aren't cost burdened or people that are thinking about like, where, how much are they going to get on the next check to afford their rent? And as someone who did previously live in the city and now just lives in the urban ring of Albemarle, it's like, I understand personally how much it can cost to live in the city, and you don't want to see people have to get priced out and then extend their commute times and then add to the increase in emissions that is just going to continue to destroy our planet and destroy the region. And as someone who's even lived, I grew up in like a surrounding county and like commuting into the city, like taking that 40-minute ride. I think the argument is always to just kind of like push people further out if they can't afford to live here. But I guess the same could be said for someone who wants a single-family house. So why not increase housing for everybody that wants to live here? And my time's done. Thank you.
Thank you. And next.
Next up, we have Joy Johnson, followed by Nicole Scrow. Joy, you're on with the planning commission.
JJ.
Please unmute.
Hey, hey. So this evening, I'm reading, I am speaking on behalf of Kamala Lee, the Wood from the fight, from the oh, I forgot, the neighborhood.
The Five Field neighborhood.
Yeah, the Five Field neighborhood. Sorry, that's my grandson. I'm sorry, that's my grandson Kingston. She says, as a black woman raising two children in this city, I have thought a lot about the map and the future of black people in this city. So much has been taken from us in this city. Having a citywide overlay throughout the city would help increase black wealth and help benefit black generational home ownership, increase motivate, motivation among black generation, increase generational income and status, increase black home ownership, have a high input on education, detach among our black children, and in some ways, decrease labor force participation. That's on behalf of Kamala Lee. I have 42 minutes. I did want to say something about affordability, if you would have given me a little bit of chance. We have to define affordability. I say this in every room I'm in. You cannot continue to talk about affordable housing and you're truly not defining affordable housing from 0 to 50%. And I do, I agree with a lot of what everybody else have said, but if you're going to talk about affordability, you need to define it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Hard act to follow.
Next, we have Nicole Scrow, followed by Ms. Simpson. Nicole, you're on with the planning commission. You have two minutes.
Hi, can you hear me? Hey, my name is Nicole Scrow. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am a seven-year renter with the city. I'm a line use attorney and I do some building and development myself. I just want to make two quick points. The first one, and I'm sorry I had a meeting or two, so I might have missed this. So I'm, I'm sorry if I'm repeating things, but it seemed like there was a direction moving towards kind of adding some elements of the sensitive areas to the general areas and kind of merging the two. I just remembered that the, the original intent of having those sensitive areas was kind of because of the lack of, you know, the divestment of those areas, you know, sidewalks, just basic infrastructure, stormwater. And also, if there are low-income areas, then there's perhaps less maintenance in, you know, homes. And so you have, if you increase intensity across the city, then you might have land grabs in those areas. So just if you have a map that highlights those sensitive areas, then you can direct grants and funds and prioritize budgets for those areas to make sure there's less displacement and infrastructure and funds going towards those areas. So that's important. The second thing is just the comprehensive, it was related to height. And again, I always want to repeat, I think that it's important to have the comprehensive plan outline the outside bounds of what's possible. The baseline shouldn't be what most middle missing housing is. It should be kind of the outside bounds of it. That's kind of the comp plan overarching view. And I just want to say, these sorts of housing types, it's, it's something that's newly being developed. So, for instance, the 2018 Building Code, which is just being opted into this year, allows allows for duplex to have, instead of fire rating for separating the walls, to have like a central fire alarm system, which you can really retrograde, retrograde or renovate existing homes per duplex much more easily. So these rules are changing and it's new, and so it's just important to have as much flexibility as possible. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And next, please?
Next, we have Ms. Simpson, followed by Jamel Bowie. Ms. Simpson, you're on with the planning commission.
Hi, thank you for taking my call. I was really tempted not to say anything, but when I heard all of these cries about racism and people of color who have not had the opportunities to excel in housing. And, and I agree with that to some degree. However, I think what you are doing is extremely drastic. I live on Rugby Avenue. You are attempting, or you are planning to upzone my neighborhood, which is a single-family home into 12-unit apartment buildings with now four stories. This is a drastic change. I would also say, why hasn't the government already addressed affordable housing with the already existing vacant lots and developer construction plans that have either recently, recently been completed or set to begin or in the process? Your own database says that there are 1,000 vacant parcels. We also don't have any significant expected growth. The census has shown that there has been less than seven tenths of 1% of annualized growth. This seems really punitive to me. There's an assumption that these are all white and wealthy homeowners and they should be sacrificed for some greater good. Well, let me tell you, I am a woman of color and I worked really, really hard to buy my home. I made sacrifices to purchase my home. No one gave me anything. I oppose this plan the way it's written, and I hope that every citizen fights back against what is complete pure government overreach. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please?
And next, we have Jamel Bowie. Jamel, you're on with the planning commission.
Thank you. Thank you so much for allowing public comment. As always, thank you for the work you're doing to improve our city. The previous speaker, in a funny way, actually kind of presages what I intended to say here, which is that I think in, I think that in continuing to work on the future land use map and looking forward to looking ahead to future changes to zoning, we must remember that the majority of residents in Charlottesville are renters, that the majority of them are working people, that those, many of them are highly cost burdened and that the only, the prerequisite to addressing cost burden among, among our work, working-class people and our low-income people is increasing density. I want to voice my support for the suggestions made by Livable Seaville, including having four stories by right, because that's essential for accessibility as well as affordability. But beyond that, I want to reiterate that we, in, in pushing forward with the future land use plan, future land use map, rather, it's just important to consider that the most affluent homeowners who have been a very vocal part of the opposition and according to some analysis, perhaps the bulk of the most vocal opposition represent a small minority of the city, that most of the people who live here don't own their homes, that most people who live here who do own their homes aren't in the, the highest percentiles of wealth, of home value. And that when making these plans, I think in the back of one's head, we have to always consider who actually lives here and whose voice isn't heard. Thank you very much. And again, I thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you. Next, please?
And next is Chris Meyer. Chris, you have two minutes. You're on with the planning commission.
Wow, that was quick. Just clicked in. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for your service. I hope you're having a good meeting. I'm calling or sorry, voicing support for more density in this community. I run a local nonprofit organization whose workforce serves many in this community and the surrounding area. And unfortunately, they are not able to afford to live in the homes that they serve, the community that they serve. Most of them unfortunately have to go outside of the community to the Albemarle Ring and unfortunately have to commute in a long different time. So in order for our organization to be successful and grow and for our, my staff to have a quality of life, they, we need more dense housing in our, in our community. I'll also say obviously the climate considerations associated with that, the denser the housing, the easier for public transportation, the less people are going to have to move out to the external areas where there is more land to build and more commuter-related emissions associated with that. So I, again, I like where the form has been going. I would encourage more density, if anything at all. And I would encourage you all to accelerate this process and get, been a lot of discussion around it. I've been involved in a lot of those conversations from my, sitting on the hack. I've observed them. There's been a lot of opportunity for consultation. I've been also part of a neighborhood association and that's been consulted. It's time to take action and then move forward with rezoning also, so then we can start to see this density added and housing added to, into our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm so prompt. Next speaker, please?
And next, we have Jeff Roberts. Jeff, you're on with the planning commission. You have two minutes.
Please unmute.
I'm off now. Thanks. Thank you guys for your time, regardless of whether we agree or disagree or you're, you've spent so much time and energy and it's appreciated. So I'm going to speak to what's really my primary concern with the current land use planning, and that's the urban mixed-use corridors. They're currently prescribed as five to eight stories by right with 10 allowed, given a pretty nebulous set of criteria, which I think in most cases will be met if somebody wants it. And and to me, this is a recipe for a slot canyon. You've got a whole strip of this going down from the old Martha Jefferson down to the corner of East, or East High and Long Street, then wrapping up and flanking Burnley Moran School on the top side of that. 10 stories is just a prohibitive height. And an interesting thing that I just found recently was that a July 15, 2015 story in Charlottesville tomorrow spoke to the planning commission's denial of, of a building in the downtown core, which was cited as being too high because it was at 10 stories. And current, then Planning Commissioner Dan Rosenbike said 100 feet is too high to have, and that's in the downtown core. So when does it become acceptable strewn throughout the city? I think it, I think that would be really damaging. Five stories, go for it. Eight, too much. 10, it's, it's inhumane. Thanks.
And thank you. Next, please?
And next, we have Chris Meyer. Chris, you're on with the planning commission. You have two minutes.
We just got Chris Meyer.
So familiar.
Nope. Did not lower his hand. In that case, we have no more hands raised. Except Kimber Hocky and Tracy Carlson. Kimber, you're on with the planning commission.
Hi, how are you?
You're a little bit quiet.
Oh, sorry. I'll just yell.
Thank you so much.
So I would like to say that I completely agree with teacher Jennifer Horn, that Belmont is a diverse and an affordable housing neighborhood for many. I want to completely discredit what people are talking about as what affluent or who affluent people are. I'm sure that most of the people commenting tonight make more money than I do. You know, we're struggling to pay for our house, just like everybody else, and that kind of characterization is divisive. I agree also with Diane Dale and James Grove on the environment and the expert comments by Ms. Keller. Ms. Mr. Whittle talked about the infrastructure needs and the obvious lack of study, that's clear. And the nine points by Dawn Marin regarding everybody flying blind are important. So I hope you listen to all of them. I also agree that we must focus on developing prime areas such as the Old Rights Auto Place. That's a perfect place for a lot of development, assuming we clean it up environmentally. I'm a bit puzzled by the expert comments because I remember attending a meeting with plans and everything about how to develop that area into a residential area. We must be mindful, of course, but there were already plans done on that at some point. I also want to discredit the idea that we're for the status quo. Actually, we're not. We're asking that Charlottesville change how this city, excuse me, but has bowed, you have bowed down for 20 years to the money interest in the city. And you've allowed lots of development with little or low percentages of units at high 80% AMI cost to renters, and that's not right. Um, there are a lot of voices you're not hearing as well because people are quite frankly scared of being harassed as I have been, both online and by telephone for the things I've said. Although again, I'm pro-affordable housing and want the city to do more, but to provide truly affordable housing. Um, I also want to talk about two things that you've received, two letters. One was focusing on using the vacant space for community land trusts to create real housing and also a letter that was written about the problematic process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please?
Next, we have Tracy Carlson, followed by Cyan Richards. Tracy, you're on with the planning commission.
Please unmute.
Thank you. Um, I moved to town just over a year ago and only became aware of the map in the past two weeks, but I'm really concerned. I'm for affordable housing, but against this plan. Quickly, I second concerns of the speaker who said we neither know how much affordable housing we have nor how much we need. Second, I would respectfully point out that, as I understand it, no one on the planning commission actually owns a house that will be affected by upzoning to medium density. Third, I would prefer an affordable housing overlay, but retaining general residential instead of changing the base districts. The overlay should be explicit. You say affordability is baked into the zoning area, areas, but there are actually a lot of faulty assumptions baked into the map. For example, I agree with others who have expressed concern that upzoning residential neighborhoods to medium density creates a real risk of luxury developments that will most likely draw in wealthy alums and others from outside the area. That's just going to increase demand for services from people who already can't afford to live here, bring more cars, et cetera. Finally, I agree with the speakers who've said there should be much more creative emphasis on redeveloping commercial and retail. There's a lot of sad, struggling retail that could be redeveloped to create a lot of housing at once with minimal impact on existing neighborhoods, and this could actually enhance the city. If we did this, we could maximize the potential to achieve affordable housing goals. And these areas have infrastructure, they're on transportation corridors, and we could get economies of scale. If we add large amounts of housing at once, we can also allow to create a good mix of price point, so we can make sure it's not just adding luxury units that will do nothing for housing affordability. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional people want to speak?
We have four more hands raised. Chair, next up is Cyan Richards, followed by John Hassack. Cyan, you're on with the planning commission. You have two minutes.
Hi there, my name is Sean Richards. Thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. I live in the Little High neighborhood and have lived in Charlottesville the majority of my life. I signed on to the Livable Seaville letter. I've also sent a letter directly to the planning commission and to city council that I'm sure will also be read. I want to echo Brandon Collins, just in bringing a little positivity for the amount of work that has gone into this and for how close we are getting as a city to making really important and meaningful changes that take us in a good and more positive direction. I certainly understand people's concerns that the housing that we bring will also be affordable and not just luxury housing. But I think we're having those conversations and I think it's maybe more productive to think of those as an additional thing to interrogate as opposed to an opposition to increasing density in the town. I think that we can do both of those things. I am, wanted also to add my voice as a renter. I'm a renter here in Charlottesville in a unit that, you know, if it were to go away, I would probably be out of luck. I'm a small business owner. I'm a member of the DBAC. So I want to add my voice as a member of the DBAC who does absolutely not want the city to focus on parking, but wants the city to focus on affordable housing. And I also understand not wanting the city to change. I feel those feelings deeply. I have been here a long time. I have lived in a lot of neighborhoods, but the reality is the city is changing. We're already changing. But it's getting more and more difficult to afford to live here. I can attest to that. Many of my friends in the arts community can attest to it. And I think as we say yes to things that bring more wealth and more wealthy people into the city, we have to start saying yes to things that also bring more affordable housing. And I appreciate the work you guys are doing towards that. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, please?
Next, we have John Hassack, followed by Jeanette Abinider. John, you're on with the planning commission.
I'd like to make some comments. First of all, on by right, I'd like to note in the plan, it talks about restructuring restrictions on height, density setbacks and parking to ensure the multifamily mixed use developments are feasible. My emphasis by right, also zoning rewrite incentivize affordability. And I, as, and I write zoning to allow increased density, changes the minimum lot size and reduce setbacks and parking. These are all very significant design criteria. It's clear that you're putting a lot of buy right into this. If anyone has any idea that they may oppose later designed high-density developments, they're wrong. The time to object is now. Engagement, I believe the less than 50% of the impact in the households are even aware of this process. I wasn't aware myself until I was emailed by a neighbor. You simply can't rely on neighborhood association email list. Some neighborhoods are better organized than others, and mine, for example, is not. Arbitrary process, every month we seem to see a new map. With these iteration, we see changes on a plot-by-plot basis. The term corridors applied, but then it doesn't, doesn't make any sense. Park and Locust inside 250 are not corridor. But Lexington and St. Charles Court are. As someone living in medium density, I feel a bit of a loser and you've completely lost me. I feel that you have the power to destroy but not to fix. You, you have, you have the capacity to pass these laws, I believe, in terms of the council and the planning commission. However, how will you ever fix the damage, supposing this goes through? And you have some undesirable developments, go ahead, go ahead. How will you ever recover those rights? Because as you probably know, once those rights are acquired by developers, it will be a legal nightmare to ever get them back. I also feel that Charlottesville is largely alone. There's no other cities that I'm aware of that has got up to 12, 12 houses per lot. And I believe in a previous meeting, a council asked that specific question and the answer was given that no other city has, has got of that scale. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, please?
Next, we have Jeanette Abinider, followed by Michael Lister. Jeanette, you're on with the planning commission.
Hi, this is Jeanette Abinider. I live in the Greenbrier neighborhood where I started out as a renter and after a handful of years became an owner in an area that I believe will benefit from more density in this plan. As a member of the Human Rights Commission, I'd like to express support for the comments that our vice chair Catherine Law and our chair Mary Barra expressed in support of the Livable Seaville letter and the critical importance of understanding housing as a human right and the practices that you are working to include that will create more affordable housing as a priority across the city and as a critical and urgent need. In addition to the comments on the future land use map, I wanted to express appreciate, appreciation for community engagement over the past few years, support for density and urgency. I also wanted to express appreciation for the many recommendations towards including food equity language through the vision, values, goals and implementation chapter. Cultivate Charlottesville, the organization I work for has worked with community members to make recommendations around food equity, and around 62 of these suggestions have been included in the current draft. However, in spite of that, food equity is not included as one of the six priorities. However, in spite of that, food equity is not included as one of the six priorities, and only one of the recommendations is included in the priority area. Given we have a partnership with city council to do this work, to engage community and bring these forward, we wanted to just recommend that that be highlighted as a priority with a handful of the recommendations under that. Another fit way that we can do of recognizing this food equity as a priority in the way that we plan our city is an overlap, an overlay map that analyzes urban agriculture corridors that the city could add food equity opportunities for community members across the economic spectrum. Finally, as a member of the steering committee, I just wanted to let you know how much I appreciate the commissions, all the time that you've dedicated, the consultants, and the commitment to this process and the values of equity. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next is Michael Lister, followed by Julia Whiting. Michael, you're all with the planning commission. You have two minutes.
Good evening. As the hour is getting late, I want to just truncate my comments to I endorse a letter or an email that I believe was sent to all of you by Robert Ramsey. I found his letter to be very thoughtful and deliberate, and I wholly endorse all the points that he makes in that letter. So I encourage you to please consider it thoughtfully as we address the challenges of affordable housing and the direction of Charlottesville in general. With that, I would also request and issue a little bit of a challenge because I've not seen or heard anything on this topic yet. And that is the deployment of city-owned assets to meet these needs. And I specifically talk, it doesn't take much effort to go to the city tax site and discover the dozens and dozens and dozens and dozens of residentially zoned properties that are owned by the city of Charlottesville. And there has been no analysis to review the capacity of those parcels for meeting any affordable housing needs, and I think you all have been remiss in not presenting that as an option to the entire community. I would also ask that the city accelerate the process of converting and moving the city yard out to Avon Extended or wherever you have it. That is prime real estate that is ideal, ideal for the affordable housing goals that you have. And if you're not going to, I know it's going to cost money, and I know that you're concerned about your bond rating, but there is no reason why you can't sell that land, recapture that money, put an affordable mandate on it, and do great good for the city while minimizing the harm to the rest of the city with this nuclear option plan that you're proposing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, please.
And it looks like we reconnected with Julia Whiting. Julia, you're all with the planning commission. Are you there?
Yes. With all the talk about affordability, there's still no recognition that new construction is expensive. Without supplemental funding, affordable units will not be produced. The future land use map is a gift to the for-profit housing industry. Now with private equity entering the housing market, price gouging will further add to the affordability problem. My daughter is disabled. Her social security check is about $900 a month. The planning commission has completely ignored the disability community. The affordability criteria that seems to be the local standard of a 20% discount doesn't come close to meeting the needs of young adults like her. If city council and the planning commission are serious about meeting the housing needs of its poorest residents, it will solicit feedback from its disabled citizens and their families. Otherwise, it is a complete pretense to call this Seville Plans Together.
Thank you. Any additional callers?
We have Mark Cavett, and then we have a couple of hands raised from duplicate speakers. Chair. And right now, we have Mark.
Okay, hopefully you can hear me. I just wanted to reiterate what Mrs. Keller said. Please listen to what she had to say, also Ben Heller, Kimber Hawley. One key question is, what is affordability? That is a question that needs to be answered in dollars and cents, not just say affordable. I know the taller earlier mentioned something about a road trip. I also like to recommend that I'd like to see you all take a road trip because I don't really think sometimes you understand what's been done in other communities. Go down to Richmond. I was in there today. See how they have made some of the goals that we want to achieve by the communities and saving the historic areas such as the fan area, Churchill. We have different types of housing with different types of price points and people of different races living with one another. Also, go to Glen Allen and see the new development that's taking place there. Go down to Rocket's Landing on the James River and see how they have done brand-new housing with modern housing as well as doing some of the buildings in historical traditional type housing to look like they were old when in fact it's not. So I just want to recommend, you know, trying to get out there a little bit and see what's been done in some other communities. Think I got a little bit actually more time, but I just came to Baltimore, saw some things that were done in Baltimore and Philadelphia, and they realized that their older housing is important, that people want steer traditional housing. And I feel that we can steer achieve by not doing a takedown program, but still achieve the goals that we basically wanted to try to do with affordable housing and more housing for the workers that may be working in military or coming to the Corps. So we don't have the growth that seems to be thought that we have. And keep in mind, all the projects have already been approved, but have not been developed because the man is not there. So the developer is holding back on that development that's been approved because they want to have a stronger demand for the apartment complexes that they do before they go forward with the building of them. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cavett. Any more unique callers? I don't think we're going to be doing additional callers tonight. If you do want to speak out to the planning commission, you can be welcome to email us or engage at Seville Plans Together. I think that's the email, or I'm just making up emails.
Engage@sevilleplans together dot com.
That's the one. Thank you. Any new unique callers?
I see no other hands raised. Chair.
I would entertain a motion.
What motion are you entertaining, or should we just give consultancy back based on the feedback we've gotten tonight?
Do you want to do that?
You're at a meeting.
I'm tired. I'd like to think about what's been said.
You want to adjourn? Is there a motion to adjourn?
That was my suggestion, but I'm open to other ideas if there are strong feelings.
Maybe a quick one, two-minute go around the room?
Yeah, we can do a quick go around. Okay, Mr. Mitchell, you seem to like you've got something to say.
Yeah, so again, I like the what the Lisa, Ms. Robertson and the consultants have talked about with these to the subdivisions. Let's nail that down, and let's protect the loophole, the closed loophole on that. The Ron, Ron, I think we need to work a little bit more on the overlay. I like where you're leading us to. But I think it needs to be more implicit than it is. So we need to be particularly the importance of the overlay and make it certain that folks understand that the overlay, the affordability overlay is going to be across the main.
Thank you, Mr. Bob. Final thoughts?
Thanks. In addition to, I think, everything I said earlier, I think we have looked, we have a lot of examples in Charlottesville of that medium intensity type typology working in residential neighborhoods, and I think that still works where we have it, and thank you. I want to thank you for all the images and examples you had in your presentation today.
And Ms. Lohendra, final thoughts?
Nothing more. Thank you.
Ms. Russell, final thoughts?
Nothing more for me. Just want to thank everyone for their comments. Thank the consultants and staff as well.
Mr. Stolzenberg?
I just want to say thank you all for your work. I think we're getting very, very close now. I think the latest changes are very positive. I do have one non-flum comment. The natural gas issue, I think, while I disagree with Mr. Groves on density and particularly the benefits of having more people in the city when the county's carbon footprint per capita is 50% higher than the city's. The natural gas issue is a very real one. I don't know that right now is the exact time to litigate it. Certainly, we have a carbon climate action plan coming up. I do think it merits an explore phasing out of the natural gas, something like that, one of those little more wishy-washy things, or, you know, use our natural gas system and or incorporate our 45% reduction and then net zero goals into our maintenance of that facility. But I think the real decision is going to have to be later and explicitly by council. That's all I got. Thank you again.
I would just briefly like to say we are so close. We are so close. Let's get this thing done. Final thoughts from council, please?
Time to go home.
We love to, love to, love to hear if council thinks we're close. That would be a great value.
I'll just be quick. I think, I definitely think we're getting closer, and I hope that we're close to the finish line on the land use map, so we can move into the zoning, right, which, as I've said before, is I actually think is going to be the far more important piece of this. And just to reiterate thoughts, as others have said, I think the subdivision issue will be important to work out. I likewise hope the affordable housing overlay, however it's termed or thought about, is made more explicit and thought about how it applies across the city and particularly how it's going to protect neighborhoods that came up as an example, like Riverside Avenue, that have affordable duplexes, public housing there. It's not outlined as a sensitive area that could be at risk if we didn't have those protections and just ensuring that that is helping to get affordability throughout the city. But I do think that we're getting closer and closer to accomplishing that, and I thank the planning commission and the consultants for the work. So we can get over the finish line and just keep in mind the ultimate goal, which is to get more affordable housing throughout the city and do what we can to try to prevent gentrification and displacement.
If you don't mind, if I could ask the mayor, Mayor Walker, are you willing to be, what do you think?
Yeah, I think we're getting closer. I still have some concerns about how the the reductions from the high intensity to medium intensity and general residential based on the feedback that was coming in. And but if this is the compromise to that, and we are still able to eventually produce some of the housing throughout the city that we're doing all of this to hopefully produce, then I will, you know, be taking that into consideration when it's before us. Some other thoughts that I had was the comments of the, like, the best buy area, the housing in that neighborhood, that those are the type of things that I hope that in the future we can partner with the developers who want to develop in those areas to build parks and, you know, trails and whatever can go in those areas to enhance the community. That's something that I've been talking about since I've been here. I just think developers should have had to do more to build in certain areas, and we just don't have those mechanisms in place. And I had another thought, and I just lost it. If it comes back, if someone else talks, then I'll, oh, the comments surrounding the what is affordable housing in Charlottesville, that is a conversation that we it's not clear, and it means something different to everyone. So it is a conversation we need to have as a community. So I just want to make sure that the citizens who share that understand that we you know, know that and that it's been something that we've been discussing and that we need to just define it for us in our community.
If I might just, Mayor Walker's comment there, I mean, frankly, when I said, let's just go home, I was being only partly flipped. But the issue that Mayor Walker raises is an important issue because I think we need to confront the fact that not only do we have a crisis in housing for people at 30% AMI, 50% AMI, 80% AMI. We have a lack of housing inventory generally, including higher levels of income availability and so on. And if you, anybody who has seen anything going on in the real estate market these days knows that there, that the demand is outstripping the supply of housing in Charlottesville, which is why housing prices are rising and why rents are rising. And it also, of course, helps explain why there is so little affordable, truly affordable housing that is available. So we can talk about affordable housing as being an important priority, and let's not water the term down by trying to expand it more broadly. Let's leave it, if you want to talk about, and we can argue about whether we ought to be looking at 50%, 30%. I think the general consensus is that at 30% or 50%, nothing is going to get built without subsidies or something from the government. It might be possible to build something at 80% AMI that's available, that's saleable to people at 80% AMI, but not to lower levels. But I also, when we start thinking about the broader question of housing in Charlottesville, we have to confront the need for more housing for the people, not only the poorest, but also the middle income. We have a housing, we have a population distribution at this point that is essentially bimodal. We have a lot of rich people. We have a fair number of poor people. The middle class has always been missing. When we talk about the missing middle of housing, we're talking about the missing middle of income levels as well. Middle-class folks have tended to move out to the county or other places because they couldn't find something in Charlottesville. Now, that may not be a crisis, but it's an important problem because I think what we're going to, what we're seeing, I've made this point before, is that Charlottesville is in danger of becoming like Palo Alto, California, where the median income is $160,000 a year, where the median, it's house sales price is $3 million a year, where the median two-bedroom apartment is $3,000 a month, where they're 93% white and Asian. And that's not who we want to be. Now Palo Alto has started by adopting a couple of years ago a series of new zoning laws that if you look at what they've done and their neighbors in Menlo Park and other places bears a striking resemblance to what is being suggested here. So when somebody says it hasn't been done anyplace before, that's actually not true. What is true is that there are a number of folks who have gone before us who haven't, because it's a 20-year time horizon to see appreciable results. We don't have that 20-year time horizon completed yet. But that's not to say that nobody else has this problem. That's not to say nobody else has gone this way before. So that's a long way around to say I, we absolutely have to deal with the the below 30%, below 50%, even below 80% AMI. But we also have to acknowledge that part of what's going to happen with this this overall scheme that is being offered to us is that we will also increase the number of housing units available and more importantly, the number of housing choices available. You will not only get people in basement apartments, but you will have people who are going to be perhaps putting together more places like McGuffey Hill or more condos or something like that, and those choices are important. I wasn't, I've got a much longer spiel I could get into, and I'm not going to at this hour. But suffice it to say that I think we need not only to look at the true affordable housing, but let's not shy away from the fact that in the process, we may also be increasing the number of housing units available for the middle class. And that's not a bad thing.
Mr., I'm sorry, Madam Mayor? You have your hand raised?
Yeah, just wanted to comment that I that we also have to, once we define, we have to prioritize. You know, a starting point. You can't start anywhere. So I just wanted to say that. And in terms of the overall And in terms of the overall land use map, is there going to be a time where we are? I mean, the comprehensive plan that we're going over some of the language. Throughout the other chapters and like community vision statement, because I also think that that's going to be, you know, very important. I know this has been our focus and it's is very important. And I appreciate everyone's work, but there are also, I just want to make sure that I didn't miss. That that's upcoming because I think that'll help us. Just clarify some of the confusion if we also take a look at the, at some of that language and that's in the entire plan.
Ms. Cook, can you speak to that?
Sure. We are, as as we think outlined pretty early in the meeting, so a lot of folks might not have caught it, was the schedule moving forward? So I will reiterate that now. And Joe, I don't know if you want to bring up the slide or not, or if I can just speak to it. We currently have scheduled a series of the hearing schedule to to relate to the final comprehensive plan. October 12th, joint hearing with planning commission and council. November 15th, first council here, December 6th, next, next, final second reading. So this is all to say that we are not currently scheduled to have another, thank you, Joe. I think it's probably the. The fourth slide with the schedule on the timeline. That one, yes, thank you. We're not currently scheduled to have a work session focused on the chapters. We. Are working through some revisions based on the the conversation we had last week with planning commission on the 14th. But we would welcome any further, further comments, especially where we can make sure it's, it clarifies some of these things we've been talking about tonight.
Thank you. And Mr. Bob?
Uh, yeah, I remember the comment from one of the residents about the in the Meadows community, the the sensitive areas. We now know that it only covers general residential, but they were saying there were some people that lived in an area that is not general residential, and how do we? Kind of protect that sensitive community. So I just wanted to bring that up as something to look at and address. I don't know if you had any thoughts right now, but.
Yeah, I think we need to talk as a team about how to approach comments related to the sensitive community areas. I'm glad we were able to clarify tonight our intent is to apply those to the general residential areas within the sensitive community. Census block groups that we've currently identified. But you know, we have, we currently have identified as a next step in process zoning ordinance to look at ways we might want to further refine those areas. So we need to talk about whether it makes sense to to do some of that refinement at this stage. To go in the the draft full plan, or if if we would want to potentially identify some areas, including. The area mentioned tonight that we may want to look at for. A potential refinements in the zoning ordinance.
Councilor?
I think thinking about timeline, I'm still kind of balancing out like. Where we're trying to get this stays knowing how important the next phase is, but I'm still a believer that we have to really have clarity where we are with this map. And I think to the question from, you know, from Mr. Mitchell that. You know, I think there still is. Some work to be done here. I think we've certainly made progress, but I mean, I've heard both commissioners and counselors, a lot of questions and like things that I think I'm hearing some themes around. And so I guess the question is, our intention is that the next time this is being considered is when it's going to be for a vote of the planning commission? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's that's currently the the schedule, yes.
Okay.
Am I hearing a desire for another work session?
I mean, I don't know, I just. I'm hopeful that we'll see an output before that meeting that we can respond to, just to see what progress has made even from the conversations today. Obviously, we've been here since five o'clock and it's almost 10:00. And so, you know, the the things that still weigh on me are just understanding. What stretches we've all agreed to making to to have more of that affordability component beyond the sensitive areas, which I've heard come up many times. As well as I still feel like there's just lack of clarity around why some of these more dead end areas are considered for medium density. And I also really have challenges, especially when I think about the S U P that was just in front of you all. What some of these impacts may have on our infrastructure and how we're going to handle those are just continuing to to weigh on me when we think about some of these more intense areas. So. Anyway, I just, I think it's important that we at least setting the stage for the zoning so like again, that it can go very fluidly. Once we get it going, because that is, that is where all the decisions are going to be made, and. I think it's going to be where the fine tuning is, but I just think it's important that we, there is common alignment. So I just think there's a lot of things been raised tonight, and I'm just trying to understand how we go from all the things that are raised tonight. To a planning commission where ultimately a decision is going to be made, or if there's going to be some opportunity to see something to respond to before then by both the.
So Mr. Chair, I think I think the mayor has just written something that jets. I think the mayor agrees with my perspective, like. We need to drive this thing to fruition. The the land use map. With this council. So we need to understand what questions council has. To make them comfortable with the the land use map we're going to recommend. And I think the mayor just chimed in saying, yes, we need to do this with this council. I do not want to have to educate a new council on this process. Because we had to educate a new council on this process.
We can do nothing more than to weigh in on this. Trust me. I'm just, I'm just making sure that in preparation for whatever's happening on October 12th, that if there's an opportunity to have something in front of us ahead of that, so we can provide any additional comments. Because I'm not really clear on what direction we collectively given tonight. That would be helpful.
So yeah, my my question is to to the chair and to Jenny and to Missy and to Alex. Into to the mayor. What do you need from us? What do we got to do to get it to you guys so that you can like? Be comfortable with the next move?
I'd be interested in that answer if you wish to answer it now. If you want to think about it, that's okay. It is almost 10:00 PM.
I guess one question I would have is whether you all think, I mean, I don't remember having heard you all discuss. Individual lots or individual problem areas. And if it is your intention to do that. When? Are you going to do that?
We've actually, we've actually gotten pretty damn darned close to like being. Having consensus. We were close to consensus on this thing. There there are just a couple of things that need to be tweaked. And we are ready to recommend something to you guys.
Well, if the answer is. I would object to that. I I'm not. I'm not. I raised issues tonight and I didn't hear answers, clear answers to them. And so I'm looking forward to seeing what. Draft is done next. And hopefully I'll have it in time to to be able to to feel good about it before our next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Stolzenberg.
I'm not ready to vote approval.
And Mr. Stolzenberg? What is the, what are the parameters of this public hearing? Is it, is it a straight up and down vote, or is there going to be discussion and potentially amendments? I think I've seen that in previous comparable hearing minutes, but at some point, I think like we've kind of litigated all the issues. We've asked all the questions. I I mean, there's probably still some up in the air, but you know, at some point we will be there, I think, very soon. And it's just a matter of making a decision, and I think we need to discuss amongst ourselves and maybe even take a vote if it's contentious on some of these more minor tweaks. So my question is, is that allowed in a public hearing, or is it, well, whatever's advertised has to be voted?
I think Ms. Chrissy needs to help us.
I'm interested in Mr. Robertson's perspective on this, actually.
I I believe that you, you all, much like any other zoning decision, are are making a recommendation and in large part. As the people who are responsible really for pulling a comp plan and amendments together. You have sort of an even stronger interest in. You know, making your own recommendation based on recommendations by staff as well as the consultant. So I I believe that you all can can have the public hearing and then among yourselves. You know, make your recommendation as you see fit, and if there are particular issues that you need to break out for. Individual recommendations, I think that's fine.
Great.
We we have been deliberating this thing since 2017. I remind you guys that this is a living, breathing document. We need to send something to council, the council can vote on. And once they vote on it, it will then iterate. It will change after they vote on it. Deliberations have to come to a conclusion at some point. We got to get a document to council, they can vote on and move on.
I would entertain a motion.
There's no motion here. There's no motion here today, because I think. We have another session that we have to. We have another session in in October that where a motion would be appropriate.
Think you want the different kind of motion?
I do want a different kind of motion.
But 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 I'm. I'm encouraging you to like send something to council that they can vote on. And we can, they can approve. But but again, with the mindset that it's living, breathing document, we can revolve, it'll evolve. As time goes on. So I guess.
Yep, I I agree. I also think it'll be helpful, the sooner we can get guidance on where you're headed with the next draft. The sooner we can get feedback from council so we can incorporate that and send council something that they like, the better. With that, motion to adjourn?
Check it.
Can I get a thumbs up or thumbs down?
Say it.
Thank you all. Have a good night. Sleep well.
Peace out. Peace out, y'all. I'm gonna have a beer.